I mean, like, I can pee it up.
When they were just starting. When they talk to God. And they talk about us. They're like, Mark, that little thing. That we need to approach. Oh, okay. I'm trying to make a national. Of course. And then they've been showing me, or trying to support them. But the people.
Maybe not.
The shit now. It's not really. Down here. The board is. You've been around your. You're on. Well, again, the rest probably more. Food.
Right. No, we actually, um, I was in Wisconsin. We actually do. He was like, pretty, like, he's pretty active. Yes. He was like.
Are you an eagle? You're an eagle. But hey, there's still a lot of learning to try. Right there. My son's an eagle as well. I was sitting with the stars.
Okay, so we, we are eagle.
Yeah, this is true. You're not. Yeah, it's great. We're being on environmental. They have. I mean, they're assuming the state. Perhaps we should. Like, I'd like to.
Is there somebody who went through, like, their program? Yeah. It's actually a bunch of lawyers. She was like, she was, um, I see what you're doing, a bunch of, like, environmental work. Where they, like, put on, like, this, like, sweet. And, like, I'm like.
Yeah, well, he works for a company. So, um, pull it up. He's a medical. I don't know. They didn't discuss those. So he's, but he's working in the, uh. Mutual. You want to put it to the school. Okay. You could take. I'm a little bit. Oh, yeah. So. Here we go.
But, but you have to be marked. Certainly marked.
Stay with us. Let's be. I know. I know. I should do one of these. This should be two. There's been. Something about consciousness.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the West Goshen Township Board of Supervisors meeting for October the third, two thousand and twenty-three. To start the meeting, will you please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, please be aware this meeting is being live streamed on the Township YouTube channel, and also the meeting may be audio or video recorded by people present in the room. Uh, the first item of business is for public comment, so is there anyone in attendance who would like to raise an issue that is not on the agenda this evening? Or who has a question or comment they would like to ask the board or staff? Doug? Go ahead.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Doug White, uh, West Goshen Township. Is there going to be any more budget workshops, extra budget meetings?
Yes, we've, I mean, we've only just started the public process for the public, uh, the, the meetings. We discussed the budget, so we've got another go around on the capital plan, and we've got probably two or three sessions that we'll be discussing the budget in detail. Staff are still in the process of preparing the budget.
Okay. Thank you. And then also, Chris, may you please put the papers up on the screen sometime? The, the, uh, the papers, the, uh, the budget papers. Maybe when you show them, when we, when we have the meetings, if you could display them on the screen.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Any other, on the quick, Margie?
Hello. Good evening. Margie Swart. Um, two weeks ago, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, um, this township building was closed from ten AM to eleven, uh, AM, and it was an employee meeting, I believe, all non-uniform employees meeting. Um, and that meeting was to announce the conclusion of an internal investigation and to provide changes, um, to any policies that came about from that investigation. The board did make a statement on, uh, August second, two thousand and twenty-three announcing that an independent firm would be performing, um, an internal review. Included in that statement, it was announced that, uh, the results of that would be discussed with the township, which they were apparently on September nineteenth. Uh, and the statement also said that, um, the township would, uh, reveal a summary of the findings, uh, and let it, and let the public know what came about that. So I'm hoping that you will do that tonight since it's two weeks. And, um, maybe if it would be easier, just share the public document. I understand that, Mr. Walsh, you did read from a prepared statement to the staff, and if you could just share that exact same statement with the citizens, I think that would be appreciated.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, Margie. I think at this point, the board has yet to decide how best to present the information to the public. It may be in the form of an agenda item. It may just be an opportunity for question and answer. So I think until we finalize that part of our process, we're, I'm happy to take a question if you have a specific question, but at this point.
Yeah.
We can have it on a future meeting.
Yeah. Really quickly, I want to just share a resolution that was passed in two thousand and fifteen, and I think this might be really helpful for the board and current management to possibly discuss, because I believe this one ordinance or resolution it is may have been what set some problems into place. So I'm going to share that with this listener. Real quickly, um, this was a redlet resolution number sixteen from two thousand and fifteen, and I just highlighted the whereas, which I think it was, is problematic, and I'm asking that, um, this resolution be amended and, um, that whereas statement to be deleted in its entirety or, or reworded. And it says, whereas, this is regarding a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of West Goshen Township, Chester County, um, for adopting a revised non-uniform employee policies manual. Um, since whereas, the Board of Supervisors desire to grant the township manager discretion in outlining the policies, programs, and benefits available to non-uniform employees in addition to enumerating their responsibilities as a West Goshen Township employee. Now, I know I've been following and coming to these meetings for many, many years, and it's my opinion that perhaps the previous township manager, um, took liberty with this whereas. And I know it's, I know it's really harsh, um, but it did not give him the license to, in my opinion, steal from the residents of this township. And from what I'm hearing, that's what took place is these policies were from previous management and previous board, and I, I would like to clarify something I said two weeks ago, public comment. I did call this a criminal organization, and I want to make it clear that I do not believe that the people that I'm looking at right now are in any way involved in any of this. And I think you're finding that out. So I would hope that this resolution could be amended, and, um, it's one thing of policy. From what I'm reading and researching, an employee handbook is generalizations, but you have policies. Policies are meant to be followed. So I just think that's really important moving forward. Real quickly, this was, is an old, I haven't seen a newer one. If maybe, um, Chris could put together a new organizational chart and put that on the website, I just think it's real helpful for the public. Um, the last one that I was able to find looks like from two thousand and seventeen, and there've been just a lot of changes. So I think that's, uh, one last thing that I brought up at last employee meeting, and I want to leave everyone with a copy of this. When I was concerned about the hundred and seventy thousand or a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, uh, due, part of the million, that's due us from the developer of Brystone. This is a public document, um, as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and it's showing that, um, the developer has already completed one hundred percent of the open space improvements, um, at a three point two million dollars. So I think this would just be helpful for your records, since I don't know that this is something that they share with, um, the township. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Margie. Do you want to give that to Chris? Thank you. And then Chris, you can look at it in spite to Margie on that one. Any other questions or comments, Margie?
Oh, one last one. Since I had a late, the meeting early two weeks ago, I listened through it to hear the budget discussion, and, um, I'm curious, it did sound like the parks, uh, park superintendent was involved in that meeting, and I'm curious if, um, we've had a change in that position or is the superintendent still the superintendent?
Yes, the superintendent is still the superintendent. She just wasn't able to attend that evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Very good. Well, we move on to agenda item four, wayfinding signage upgrade. I believe we have someone here from Chester County Tourism, Mrs. Hamley. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I am Susan Hamley. I'm the executive director of Chester County Tourism. I'm going to introduce this because, well, I know more about wayfinding signage now than I ever thought I would. I'm not the expert. So John Bozio here from Merge is, um, I happen to be the owner per se as the tourism director. So I think if you're advancing for me.
Yes.
That, that would be great. Thank you.
Did you get a laser pointer?
No, I don't think so. I can say if you do. So the next slide. But let's go one more, so it makes more sense. So this is a list of the types of destinations that we signed. It's probably not all inclusive. It's just to give you an idea that all throughout Chester County, these signs were created very novel idea at the time, probably about thirty or more years, and they were, um, just put into the ground. If you look at them today, and you're going to notice them now when you leave, if you go this direction, you'll see American Helicopter Museum. Once you close up, because it's very faded, it's out of date, they're Miami Vice colors, they're falling down, they're one hundred percent out of compliance with PENDOT regulations. So what happened was, we did this program, the people back then, together with our counterparts in Wilmington, Delaware, and finally, Del Dot looked at the signs in Delaware and said, these have got to come down. You either replace them or they come down. So I just started then, and I was first thing on my plate, so I didn't even know where I lived yet, but I was learning, and found out that, um, PENDOT also, the requirements were way, they're just not compliant at all. So we took a look at it together with Wilmington and said, let's, let's, let's take this project on. And I think if we go to the next page. It, this is going to give you some examples, and I think John can speak to it, but the point is that they don't work. They don't reflect the character of Chester County, which is such fantastic scenic beauty. Um, everything is out of date, as I mentioned. So since Del Dot was taking theirs down, we advanced on this project, and it's been the longest project I think I've ever worked on, about eight years now, but we're finally at the end. We want to focus on phase one being this corridor, since it's still connected to, um, greater Wilmington area, and it makes it part of the system. Signs would be different colors, but it's still a system, and I'll just throw out there, if you say, everyone's got GPS these days, so why do you need signs? Well, the signs are, they create a sense of confidence, like, as I, I came here from somewhere else, I'm driving along, I know where I'm going, I have GPS, but when I see the sign, it gives me confidence, but more than that, it's a marketing tool. So we've heard time and time again, when Longwood has time tickets at the holidays, people are going there who don't know, who realize, oh, my gosh, I can't get in today, but I saw a sign for Winter. And they turn around, they've gone down fifty-two, and they've gone to Winter. Well, when people come here, locals, but also from out of town, they bring their wallets, and they spend money in our towns, they spend money with our businesses, and that's what we're trying to do, is tourism is part of the economy for Chester County, and this, I think, will help support that.
And I'm going to introduce John Bozio from Merge.
Good evening. I'm John Bozio from Merge. Uh, we're the designers and planners on the project, Merge. We are an environmental graphic design firm. We are in Westchester, but our reach is nationwide. We've done one hundred and fifty communities throughout the country, from Florida to California, Washington State. So we're glad to do a project that's right in our backyard. I think one of the things that Susan did not mention, which is really important, is that this program is no cost to the township. It is all funded through, um, the Tourism Bureau and PENDOT grants. So, um, what we're here for tonight is that, in order to implement the program, even though it's a replacement of a existing system and it's out of compliance, PENDOT requires us to get a resolution from each of the communities that the system is going into, um, and that's what ultimately you'll be asked to do is join the sign, what they refer to as a signing district. So that's a big part of what we're here to present, so you understand what we're, um, trying to get at as we go through this. Um, you can just flip through a couple of these. As Susan said, it's the Miami, but we've referred to it as the Miami Vice system, um, teal and pink, it just doesn't fit into the environment. You'll see signs that are covered by, um, trees, we can't even see it, I think that one's actually down the road. Um, you'll see sign clutter, all this stuff comes down, and we're trying to create, um, a more consistent look and feel. It is a system of wayfinding of awareness. I drive by this every day, and there's no message on it. Um, you know, that particular one. Um, it is a system of awareness, and that's what wayfinding is really trying to build about the community. So again, installed in the late eighties, um, it's not compliant. Del Dot has, um, was going to remove it, and we have installed phase one in Delaware, um, and they are doing phase two. We did not install it. We do not build signs. We're just designers and planners, as I mentioned. So you can go to the next slide. Um, this is the system. Um, there are reflective signs, so you'll be able to see them at night. The sizes are all determined by traffic engineering and PENDOT requirements for copy height. Um, we're limited to three messages per paddle, um, and there's other requirements through, um, the manual for traffic control devices that we have to follow. So that sits heavily on how we design the systems, their breakaway. This will, the blue will be the signs in Chester County. You can just flip through those. Um, you'll see these are lower speed, where we have four inch high copy, and on the next slide is higher speeds, where we have six inch high copy. Again, they're all code requirements. If you travel down fifty-two, um, into Delaware, on that northern edge of Wilmington, you'll see they put these signs up probably about three years ago, um, and then they are now doing phase two. So you can see in Delaware, they're pointing to the PA branding line, valet attractions, we'll do vice versa. So it's really a link between, between the two. Um, there's different, um, sizes, they, they wanted to use brown for their parks. And this is mainly the system. So that's what it looks like built down in Delaware. So we are in the process, and Susan can talk to this a little bit more, um, of, we put together the design and the plan, which you'll have in your packet, um, and now we're going through that, um, final review with PENDOT. They require that signing district application from each of the municipalities. There are twenty-six municipalities in Chester County that we have to go to. You're number three, three weeks in a row. Chester County offered to do this, so we didn't have to go to all twenty-six, but they said no, so now we're going to all twenty-six to replace something that's already out there. You can go through the next slide. Um, so we did include a packet of where the signs in West Goshen will go, um, and there is a sign location plan, there is a message schedule, you just flip through it. You have the most sites of the first four that we're doing, uh, first four communities. There's a picture where each sign goes. If your staff reviews it and they want to add a message or change terminology, um, we are certainly open to that. We realize that it's the first time that we've sort of run it by. The important part for us is that each of the communities agree to be part of the signing district. Again, it's paid for by Susan's group and grants. It's also maintained by them. So there's a, a second agreement between you and the Tourism Bureau that they will maintain them. They've been maintaining the existing signs, um, uh, for the past thirty years. They have insurance on them, so when they get hit, it's covered. So, um, you should be, you should understand that A, you're not paying for it, and two, you don't have to maintain it. Um, so this document is put together, and then there's graphic layouts for the, um, for each of the panels. So, um, again, we were in Chad's Ford last week, and they wanted to change the name of something, and we'll, we'll do that. So we're really here to present the project, hopefully get a, um, let you know that we need to get that signing district application together.
So that's the ask this evening is to consider, um, becoming a signing district and then consider signing the delegation agreement, saying, just kidding, we will do all that, we will pay for it, it's not costing you anything. We just want to see the system in place, and you can't have half a system. You can't have people driving, and all of a sudden, there's no more signs, it doesn't do any good. So before, our tenant squares already approved, signed the paperwork, that's done. TransFord, we met with last week, and it's their intent, they have not signed yet. Um, we're here today, and I'm hoping this goes well. And next week, we are in Westchester. So that's the answer.
Any questions, either of us?
Yeah, just have a couple. Just to reiterate, there'll be no cost to the township for this.
I'll say that into the mic, so you've got it.
There's two agreements that have to be signed, by actually. One is the agreement between the township and PENDOT, right? Which would assign, uh, to the township, uh, to coordinate, provide, and maintain the T O D S signs, right? And then we have to have another agreement with you guys, that you guys will take that over?
We're asking you to, if you want to pay for it, take care of it.
I'm just asking, where is this, like, agreement? I don't see it in the packet. I, I see the agreement with PENDOT, but that's the one that you got.
There is a delegation. I'll make sure if you don't have that, that you do.
Yeah. The only one I recall receiving is the signed district agreement for transit oriented directional sign.
Make sure that I send you the delegation. If, if there's something in there that you want to change, we're not married to it, they had a lawyer produce it, since we didn't have one, um, but feel free to make sure that it fits the language of your township.
But the intent is that you don't have to maintain.
Right.
Other questions from the board?
Well, I think they're really nice looking.
The new ones, right?
Yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, so are you proposing removing some of them? Cause like, I know you showed one that had some trees in front of it, is that what you're planning on relocating to inside?
Yeah, so there are new ones, there's some direct replacements, and there's others that were shifting around based on the conditions that are around there.
Are you going to work with the township and that, or are you just?
Yeah, so when it gets closer to installation, as we go through that process, we'll go out and we'll market with each of the townships to make sure that it's appropriate in a great spot.
And I should say, too, the goal is to declutter, not to make more clutter. So where there's three signs pointing to the same thing, where there's three signs, one is narrow this way, another place is narrow this way, we're trying to declutter because it's just visual pollution, in my mind anyway, for such a beautiful place. So, um, we're not inclined to add more signs. We are inclined to put them on the right side of the road, make sure there, you know, everything is working correctly.
What's your timeframe for completion?
Good question. PENDOT gave us a grant for two hundred thousand. To accomplish that, we must get approval from PENDOT and the signs fabricated and in the ground by March of two thousand and twenty-four, which is why this October timeframe, I know, which is why this October timeframe is so important. If we can get this all done by the end of the month with the townships, then PENDOT's always, we don't know how long it's going to take, but with everything complete, which we will have, we're hoping that will be quickly, and then we go right to fabrication, and then signs in the ground. And that's just the phase one. Then we have the other twenty-two municipalities, but this one's first.
Um, so I don't want to get too far into the weeds tonight, but when I look at the individual signs, it seems to me like some of them are questionable as to whether they should continue. So for example, there's three or four that are associated with finding the West Chester University Graduate Center, which really is not a tourist attraction, it's not something, you know, that to me requires replacement of sign.
There, I believe with that one, there, there are existing signs out there that are Todd signs, and PENDOT is requiring us to replace anything that's existing. So if it's already existing and signed, um, we do not have the option to delete it. If it's something that's new, that you decided you can't, that you don't want, then we would, we would delete it. But that's a PENDOT requirement.
So if we, if you didn't have a grant, you didn't have any money, and these things were falling down, PENDOT would say, someone has to replace them?
If you're going to do a signing district and put up a new system, you have to replace what's out there.
Okay. Um, there is a, there is one, I think there was a new one. It was in front of a property, right here on Payall Pike. I'm not sure I would support adding that either. It was right in front of a residence, I believe. Do you not want to?
Well, you can take a look at that, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so if we move forward with the signing district documentation, signing that, then all existing signs would need to be replaced to this standard in twenty years' time, you would still be responsible for maintaining them. But today, you're responsible for maintaining them, and they're not in the condition we would have hoped, right? Like you said, we've shown us examples of ones that will either fall down, no signage on them, et cetera. So is this really a sustainable process from a financial perspective, from a dollar perspective?
They were, once, once it was determined that, at least from Susan's group, that they had to be replaced, they stopped maintaining them, um, several years ago because they thought that this was going to happen. We were actually very close to coming to you prior to the pandemic, in the end of two thousand and nineteen, beginning to, then in that hit, and our funding went away, so everything went on pause. So, um, there may have been some things that have actually been changed since then.
Yeah. I, I believe you said that Chester County has approved this, the, I don't know which, um, department there is, is on board with this and was trying to help you by saying, we can, see if we can just prove this blanket wide, but that PENDOT told you to go to all the municipalities, is that correct?
PENDOT will not allow a government, a non-government agency, like Susan's group, to, um, become a signing district. It has to come from a government agency. Because the signs are in public right of way, they would then not allow Chester County to accept the responsibility for it, so that they then moved it back to, from a regional standpoint, you have to have each municipality accept the responsibility for it. That's why, instead of having ultimately have it, it goes back to Susan, so it's just, that's the way to do it.
Okay. And what materials will be used with the sign? Are they a step up from what's been used in the past?
Yeah. Right now, they're just, yeah, now they're just thirty-year-old wood signs. Um, they are aluminum, they are painted with a, um, high-quality paint, which is more like an automotive paint. The sign paddles are reflective, and it's required that the background and the copy be reflective. They're required to have a seventy percent contrast. They also have breakaway, um, components to it. So right now, it's a wood pole that's just buried in the ground, so if a car hits it, you have to go get a new footer and all of this. The new ones are breakaway, so it shears, and then you just come and you put it right back on, so you don't have to replace the footers. These are very standard sign-making materials, and they're common to all the projects that we design.
Any other questions from the board? At this point, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in attendance who would like to ask some questions. Is there anyone in? Steve?
Yeah. Will you be able to add additional attractions to these signs? Are they, like, components that you can?
Yeah, you would, you would add a different panel to it. It's not modular, the modularity ends up, um, adding a cost to it, um, but you could, um, enlarge the panel or make the panel smaller and add stuff to it.
If somebody, for example, goes away, okay, how would you treat that?
Yeah, so in that case, the, the face of it is vinyl, so it can be applied on top of it with the new, um, you could do that once or twice, um, but then, um, that's how you would do it. you could do that once or twice, but then that's how you would do it.
It's 30 years of old.
Yeah, it's just a line.
Exchange.
Doug?
Are you going to do any historical signs?
No, we're not doing historical markers, it's strictly wayfinding signs.
I see.
These signs that are on Pendott roads, which I imagine have a majority of them are, it sounds like the board might be concerned about possibly one day in the future being responsible. It doesn't sound to me like that should be a concern. But I'm just curious, those that are in the Pendott right of way, would that fall in Pendott?
No, by doing the signing district, what you're telling Pendott is that it's not part of this overall program. That's why they need to give it their signing district, because they don't want to touch it.
Any other questions? Okay, so what action do we need tonight? I mean, you're looking, we haven't got the full document, right? We haven't got this other agreement that our solicitor needs to review.
It'd be like if you just give them the test, go ahead, you can get the documents, hopefully review them for your next meeting.
Is there anyone on the board who is not in favor of continuing in the direction of having a signing district agreement with Chester County Tourism? And making sure that we are not responsible for maintenance of these signs in the future? Okay. All right, so similar to, what did you say, transport indication? Do you, we have intent to move in this direction, we just need some more information at this point?
Well, then we can move forward in this direction and then just review.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying, I think.
We signed Pendott tonight.
Yeah.
Can we sign my part that I?
I would rather get the full package. Let's see the whole connectivity between who defaults to what. I would like us to look at it personally.
The Pendott agreements, 100% will push everything to the township, and I just want to make sure that we then push everything to the tourism business. I mean, that's, the Pendott agreements usually are so one-sided, and I know we can't change anything in the Pendott agreement. So just want to make sure we come up with the agreement that, yeah. Not expecting it to be hard or long or put, you know, a lot of work into it. I just think it's good for the township, again, for the fact that it's lasting for as long as it will. And that can be done very quickly.
That will be due tonight.
Sure.
I actually have one last question. How is the Chester County Tourism Bureau funded?
We are funded by a hotel tax, solely by a hotel tax. So when people stay in the rooms, that's added onto their bill, like any hotel across the country, and then that funds us. We do send a portion back to the county to help fund partisan, because recreation is tourism-based. But that's, that's our entire funding.
Okay, thank you.
I can comment on that. I believe you said your organization isn't considered a government organization?
Right.
And that's interesting to me, this is something I'm getting here, that it's essentially funded by tax dollars. So it's interesting that you're not considered a government organization when you're collecting taxes as your source.
I always call us dotted line because we don't, we aren't part of the government. But the funds that are collected go through the county, the county give them to us, we give back the amount to them, and so they are collected through the county. It's pretty much how it's run throughout the country. So we're not different, but it is, I know what you're saying, it's unusual. We think it would be, but it's not because it goes through the county.
Last chance for any questions. Well, thank you so much for being here tonight. I appreciate it. Fill up with the rest of your schedule. Okay, next on the agenda is item number five, which is discussion and possible approval of the following items associated with the Matlock Street Colbert Rehabilitation Project. An easement agreement with 897 South Matlock Street, an easement agreement with 890 South Matlock Street, and a proposal from National Gunite for the Matlock Street Colbert Rehabilitation Project. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, before the board this evening are two easement agreements and a proposal from National Gunite for the Matlock Street Colbert Replacement Project. Township budgeted, the township budget allocated $397,000 in the Capital Reserve Fund for the replacement or lining of the Colbert and Matlock Street. As opposed to a full Colbert replacement, our street superintendent Mark Berlami evaluated the possibility of lining this area, and the proposal from National Gunite outlines a full circumference rehabilitation using the same method that we utilize, that will be utilized on Loxley Road that was discussed at a previous meeting. This does also include cleaning of the existing pipe. The total proposal amount is $59,662 per National Gunite, and they are a co-star's vendor. Additionally, there are two easement documents that are before the board this evening for this project with 890 and 897 South Matlock Street, and these are permanent easement agreements for the construction and future maintenance of these areas. The easement agreements have been signed by both of the respective property owners.
Thank you. So tonight, we're looking to consider to approve the easement agreements and also the proposed project?
Yes, and Kristen did review the, reviewed the proposal from National Gunite. She had some changes to their terms associated with staging, with the staging of equipment under section. I believe that was the, that was in the scope of where the preliminary site work on the proposal, as well as, Kristen was the second one.
So the first one was just on the first page. They identified that the contractor would have to coordinate with the owner of 897 South Matlock for the staging of the equipment, and we are not permitted to stage equipment in Mr. Kelly's property, so that needs to come out. And then on the second page, under the terms, it says that if the township wasn't, you know, didn't pay the invoices, that National Gunite can file the appropriate lien documents against the property, which, if they're not real clear on what they mean by the property, that's on my gun, talk about. They can't put liens against Mr. Kelly's property or the apartment project property, so I think that just needs to come out, and they can't really put lien against Township Road, so that sentence needs to be.
Where, where's that section?
That's on page two, under paragraph B, terms, number two. That whole sentence should be straightened.
And we sent both of these changes to National Gunite, and they've agreed, they've agreed to the changes. So we'll strike that second paragraph under the terms. And in terms of staging equipment, we'll stage the equipment at the municipal complex.
Okay. So Boyd, what questions do you have for Stan or Kristen on these, this item?
Well, I guess I'll start.
Go ahead.
Mark, I don't know if it comes popular, just trying to get a feel for this Gunite procedure or process. I think it says it's 6,000 PSI, so it's waiting for you for 30 days. What's that compared to the CMP PSI compressors, right? I mean, is it stronger or less strong? I mean, what are we talking about here?
I don't know if I can compare the shock to the metal plate, but it will be strong, it'll have wire mesh in the concrete. So you're just lining the metal plate, create the shock. So I don't really have concerns with that.
Now, I guess what I'm getting at is just the durability of this particular Gunite process compared to some other way of handling it. I mean, what else could you, you could re-light it, right? Or you could dig the whole thing up and replace it, so.
And that's where we got the $400,000, which is Carol for digging the whole thing up.
Right, right. And that's the way did it bombing street, right? So here, we're trying something a little different. I'm trying to get a handle on that. I mean, is this a really good way to go?
Yeah, I mean, they're giving you a minimum of 57,500 year life of the pipe.
Longer than any one of us would be around, right?
So I mean, that's a very, I mean, that's a road by adding more than cars to travel on than any other township or another Pendott or West Goshen. So I think it's important to take care of that, that's the energy pipe.
Is there any size to the, minimum size of piping in order for them to use this process on?
I believe it's 24 inches.
24 inches, 24 inches, really?
Because you've got to actually, you've got to crawl in.
Yeah, you've got to, I think you want the two-foot wide space, that's one.
Yeah, well, this pipe is bigger than that, but it could be 24 to 30 inches. 30-inch might be the minimum.
How big is this, is it 48-inch, this pipe?
This one's 36 by 38.
And again, once they get started, any idea how long the duration of this project will be?
Loxley will be two weeks, so I anticipate this one probably a week. This one's, Loxley's pretty clean, where this one's filled with debris. So they anticipate one, two days cleaning of like first before they start the process of lining.
So we're talking maybe three weeks, four weeks?
Probably one week, maybe a little more for Matlock, and you're estimating two weeks for Loxley. Same company, they're hoping to come in, start Loxley October 9th, two weeks, then roll over to Matlock Street after that.
Are there any safety considerations for doing this way for pedestrians or traffic? Is the street going to have to be closed off for any period of time?
We're hoping there'll be no road closures.
Hope, and what?
Well, there won't be, wouldn't be a closure, it would be the mash up on, on line gap, but that's not part of the line.
Okay, if something unexpected arises, then that may have happened.
So just, just to follow up on that, Mark, a little bit. When I look at the easement areas, it don't look very extensive relative to getting in there, jetting, vacuuming out the substantial debris that you can see at the side of the road that's in these Colbert, in this Colbert. And then to stage and get someone to be able to get inside and apply the mesh and the concrete, the gunite, shockcrete, whatever it's called. I mean, I'm just wondering whether these easements are going to be sufficient to do the job without having to shut the street down at least one lane at a time, or should come in from either end?
It's a possibility. It's a real possibility, but it would be a drive.
Could you, are you able to clean it out solely from one side? Or do you have to get from both sides to be able to clean out that deep length?
I think they'd be on one side.
Could you, will the equipment allow you to enter from one side and be able to apply the new material just from one side, and just so you're going to have to come from both ends again?
I think we'd be on one side. The Loxley project, they're starting on one side, they're not coming on the other side.
Other questions from the board?
You want to say like two days to go, Mark?
I think Matlock's going to be more like a week, it's going to look a longer. Two days, maybe just.
You believe this shockcrete approach is better than a sleeved lining like we've done on a couple of these other projects as well?
Well, I think so for that size of pipe.
Yeah.
Also showing the condition of the pipe is, I believe, for when we were there last year, the bottom, there's not enough of the existing pipe left to use a sleeve. That's why we're using this, this proposal because the shock reaction uses the wire mesh to create a reinforced concrete pipe inside the existing deteriorated pipe. Whereas a sleeve needs enough of the existing pipe to, when it cures, it's not cured, the pipe, there's too much of it gone. If it won't cure, it'll, it'll disappear to the void, and we won't get a good hydraulic shape.
Yeah, that's the thing, as Steve was thinking, like he did on Knollwood.
This map, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if you can do it, because it's an oval pipe, it's not like a perfect circle.
Yeah.
So that, I mean, that Knollwood was a really special project.
That was a nice, nice outcome, huh? Okay. All right, so we're confident that this solution, we believe, will give a long-lasting mechanically sound, would give this, the volume of traffic and the weight of traffic that travels through that intersection is going to get some pounding. Any other questions? All right, so we're looking for, so we need to, do we need to approve the easements individually?
You can do it on its own.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mark.
Is this right at Matlock and 202, like right where?
Yes.
Do we have any land development or any projects that's submitted for property in that area? Just curious for future reference, is this something in the future that somebody's planning to redevelop? That you could have as a condition?
No, this is an offsite improvement.
Okay, I want to be pointed.
Is there anyone else with a question at this time? Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to take it in two chunks. Let's, I'll make a motion to approve the two easement agreements between the township and the property at 890 South Matlock Street and also the property at 897 South Matlock Street. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Is there any board comments on approving, on the motion for these easement agreements? Is there any public comment on the motion?
I just have to follow up with that. So like the apartments that we, were built where the adway was, did we require improvement?
Well, if they need a new pipe, if this pipe was a pipe that was in the road that handled the flows of the road, this isn't a pipe that was needed for development. So if that project needed a storm sewer pipe to cross underneath the road, then that's, yes, that could be put on development because they needed that kind of thing. Or if they were contributing flows to an existing pipe that was not in sufficient capacity or size, then you could ask them to upgrade the pipe to handle their flows. So we can ask, what depends? It depends on each project and whether they're adding to the flows that are going through a pipe.
Any other, any other public questions or comments on the motion? Okay, then we're ready to take a vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes 5-0. Okay, so let's talk about the proposed project. So this is the National Gunite proposal with the two changes to the scope and terms and conditions that Kristen outlined, and the amount was, total amount was $59,662. Is there, someone willing to make the motion to approve this proposal?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. So a motion of second for the approval of the proposal from National Gunite. So any board questions on the motion? Is there any public comment or questions on the motion?
I would just devote a speed.
This was a co-star's approved vendor to do the work. Have we used it before, Mark?
We have not, but they have been recommended from here on here.
And this is the same company that's going to be handling the project on Loxley?
Any other questions? Okay, then we're ready to take a vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes 5-0. Thanks, Mark, thanks, Brian, thank you, Kristen. Very good, we're on to agenda, item number six.
Hold on. I'm sorry. So I just pulled up 897 South Matlock Street, and it says this property is for sale, so.
You were interested in buying it, Marjorie?
No, but I'm wondering if there's an opportunity, if this is going to be sold, redeveloped, that that could be an offset.
This project was supposed to be done in May, because of the concern about the pipe. We don't have time to see if the property is sold or negotiated, and that wouldn't be appropriate condition. As we just mentioned, it's an existing pipe that's deficient in handling.
Yeah, I don't, and I don't think I argue with you, but at the Matlock Street, when the apartments went in, we required them to make upgrades to the traffic lights, and traffic lights were already there.
And that was as a result of them contributing additional traffic to that intersection, and traffic improvements are something a little bit different than pipe capacity improvements are still, which is handy for, excuse me, some super, but, so.
I mean, redevelopment is probably going to have to comply with our current stormwater best management practices, which means there may be some less flow going into here, so the likelihood of any contribution is de minimis.
Well, yeah, just absorb it.
That's good, glad to know it's for sale.
So the, the Ballmar Street, it sounded like, in a way, that might have come about because of why the property, that's going to be developed, and seemed like it was, wanted to get that done because of all these additional trucks, so that warehouse property, it was better to have that done. So again, it seemed like we were doing improvements that perhaps we could, we could have the developer, the new person that's going to come in and has to build 200 apartments right there with a new stormwater system, that then they're responsible for upgrading that.
I cannot think any redevelopment is going to have to comply with a stormwater best management, which is going to reduce the amount of volume, which is there. It would be very difficult to say you need to spend money on offsite improvements because stormwater flows are changing. Okay? Okay, thanks. All right, item number six, which is discussion and possible issuance of the final award to Hobson Company Inc. for the infrastructure expansion project for additional EV charging stations at the township. Chris?
I ask Mr. Chairman, so before the board this evening is consideration for the petition to final award to Hobson Company for the infrastructure expansion project for additional electric vehicle charging stations for the township's municipal complex. The bids were opened on August 29th, with the apparent low bidder being Hobson Company. For background information, we received 10 bids, and they range from $152,665 to $355,225. The September 5th meeting, the board approved the notice of intangible award. At the September 5th meeting, the board approved the notice of intent award to Hobson Company pursuant to Chapter 65 of the Township's Code Ordinances. Chris Peterson, Carol Engineering, completed the required review and has certified that they meet all the requirements of the Township's ordinance. I provided a copy of Mr. Peterson's recommendation letter to the board. And based on this review and the recommendation from Mr. Peterson, I recommend the issuance of the final award to Hobson Company Inc. in the amount of $152,665, based on their bid dated August 29th, 2023.
Thanks, Chris. Does the board have any questions for staff? Okay, so we've previously discussed this project. We previously issued the intent to award to Hobson Company Inc. And now we've completed the step of ensuring that they conform to our contractor responsibility requirement. So is there someone willing to make the motion to make the final award to Hobson Company?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, actually. Any board comments or questions? Any public comments or questions on the motion?
For this infrastructure expansion project, it'll also be useful for other things in addition to charging stations, since there's other electrical lines that might be needed down in the future.
Its sole design intent was to provide substantial capability to charge a, the township fleet in the future. So it's a preliminary, it's the first phase of a project to be able to, long-term electrify most of the township fleet. As and when vehicles reach replacement age, as and when an appropriate EV replacement would work.
But can this infrastructure also be used for other light vehicles?
Not, not really. It's running conduit wire to the parking spots where vehicles are parked and can be charged overnight. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So now we are. Okay, thank you. Don't confuse it. We're ready to take a vote. No other questions from the public on it? All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes five zero.
Any idea when we're going to get started on this project, Chris?
I do not have a date, a start date available now. I can let the board know. Once I send back the certification form to Chris, then we'll get an idea on when they're going to start.
Okay, next is agenda item number seven, discussion regarding results of the corrugated metal pipe televising and cleaning. Is a lengthy packet of information available?
That guy came with pictures, a lot of pictures.
Came with a lot of pictures. Maybe, Chris, you and Mark summarize what you have observed to date with this work by Soft Dig.
Sure. Mark, you want me to kick it off and then kind of fill in some of the gaps?
Yeah.
Okay. So the board authorized, this is related to the cleaning and televising of certain corrugated metal pipe sections in the township's storm sewer system. This was based on the analysis that was completed by HRG from data gathered by the Army Corps of Engineers. It's outlined areas with various areas with significant issues. And we all, the board expanded the study areas. I believe there was 15 in total.
There was 13 spots in like three neighborhoods.
That's correct. And the board authorized at the July 18th meeting, a not, an engagement with Soft Dig Underground Services to complete the work for not to exceed a amount of $54,000. We were able to complete the identified areas within budget. I think it was around 47 when all came in. So about $7,000 under budget. So we provided reports from the Public Works Department. I'd like to thank Nate and the Public Works Department for putting these together. We are, we actually just got the final data done from Soft Dig today. But it does provide a good idea of the existing conditions. We met as a staff and reviewed the, reviewed the results. It was myself, Brian, Mark, Paul McAvoy, our streets foreman, and Nate Yarnell in our streets department. Generally speaking, the primary areas identified in the initial HRG report can mostly be completed in-house by the streets department. If you look at some of the pictures that were provided, it's not as significantly deteriorated as originally thought. But the most significant issues that we found related to the fresh meadows development. And in addition to the report, Mark provided pictures of what they have seen in that development from a project that was completed, I believe it was in April, I want to say.
Oh, that we did?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did that in the spring.
So in the spring of this year. So those are the pictures.
In the past years, and I never did.
So the images that are in the memo are from a project that was undertaken this spring. So in terms of like an area to really focus on, and speaking with Mark, we think a lot of those original 12 areas that were identified in the HRG report from the Army Corps could probably completed, be completed through in-house, in-house labor by our streets department. The fresh meadows area, I think, would be a significant undertaking based on the data. There is a large volume of pipe that seems to be deteriorated in there. And Christine provided an analysis of the American Rescue Plan Fund with all the potential expenditures. The other area I want to bring up is on Ash Bridge Bridge. Brian, could you bring up the pipe direction, please? So this was located in the rear of a property adjacent to Clapp Park. The chairman, Brian, and I, the end of July after a significant rain event, went out and met with the property owner. We discovered that there is a pipe that travels through private property that goes into and goes into an inlet in the rear of his property. It's roughly a 30-inch diameter pipe with, we'll say about a half, that is filled with concrete. So we did add this to, we did add this to the analysis. That pipe that runs in the back of his property is filled with concrete the entire length from that inlet to that manhole that Brian is pointing to. It then goes to the left into property that's owned by an adjacent HOA and then discharges to an outfall. The pipe is completely clean from attic, from the area behind the 1241 Ash Bridge Road to that manhole to the outfall structure.
So you checked from the manhole to the outfall as well?
Yeah.
From that 12-inch property?
Yeah.
Was that recently or? Did you, you didn't televise all the way through there, right? Televise to the manhole?
No, and then we went all the way to the outfall direction.
So where's the manhole, do you think?
So from CB 33, 121, it goes to the manhole on the other side of the railroad tracks. And then it shoots to the right on your screen to an outfall from another 100 feet, which is a 24-inch CMP to another field.
Did you televise the CMP or just doing visual?
I, I actually turned the video off because it, so I'm not exactly sure if they went all the way through, but it looked really good if you can.
Okay. Are we sure the outfall itself is not jammed up with debris?
No, the concrete, so important concrete, like the perfect, the area was in the camera on top of it. That was clean, it was completely clean, but it reduced us out of that pipe. I think that pipe was 24 inches, 24 to like 12 inches cutting in the cam.
And what's interesting, when it reaches that manhole where the concrete runs entirely, that second pipe that leads to the outfall structure, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, the base of that pipe aligns with the concrete that's in the other pipe.
And that shows out on the video.
So it's a smaller diameter pipe, that second section there?
Yeah.
The flow is reduced. Everything's helping with the flow of the issue with the concrete.
And we know from the analysis that Carol Engineering, Carol Engineering did, that this is undersized for the amount of flows that brought through to this direction.
It's not just under, it's not just undersized.
There's no basin or anything?
There's no basin. Actually, Brian, can you turn contour lines on, please?
What's the size of this one, Mark? The one in the existing one, what's the size of that one?
The one that goes on the railroad tracks is 24 inches, but because it's been driven with concrete.
Yeah, it's 12 inches.
And then the one that goes in the field is 24 inches too. There is a hole in the pipe that we had shipped from Parkmont to CB 33, which is 12-inch HBT pipe, but that's on private property.
What size do I anticipate we should have had here? I mean, we have like a 12 now, basically. What do you think we should have had at this location?
Like 40?
That's my safe.
So it's a lot of. Well, because if, and the reason I had Brian turn the contour lines on it, you can see the ridge line, and then there's a 10-foot, there's a 10-foot elevation drop from that ridge line down to that individual's property. So that property prior to its construction essentially acted as a basin for that whole area.
You can almost, you can see the circular contours here, how they can structurally go down to the low point. Low point is right here. That's about where the structure is. And then the pipe goes under the railroad. This was ill railroaded back then. Pipe comes through this direction, turns, and then it happens up right here.
So they basically built the house in the basin?
Correct.
What's the condition of that pipe that runs before it shifts?
Into the field? I believe it's good. I'll have to recheck the table. Camera made a turn at the manhole and it looked pretty good. Something happened to the computer, just shut down.
You were asking about the other pipe, Mark.
She's asking about this pipe here.
No, I was asking about that.
The one that's under?
Yeah.
So from looking at the report, looking at what I saw in the video, pipe's in very good shape. The ducted wire pipe was filled half with concrete, but all the structures that lead into it were filled, so they're all level on that, at that structure. So somebody at some point designed that to be a control structure to control how much water we're throwing. That's why they filled half the pipe with concrete, fully level. It's, it's smooth, it's clean, it's.
But it's half as wide as it was before, just to consider the flow?
Well, I think. It's like all these things, you know, it's like unintended consequence. If you have it, if it was full bore, imagine how much would be coming out the other end and what would be the consequences on this other project over here. So at some point, someone's made a determination to re-limit the flow, manage the outfall better, and that's now a consequence.
I'm speculating that it was done as a great control structure in the railroad.
When the railroad went?
And the railroad was constructed, and back then it was built for the railroad, we put this in because, and that was the most, all the water was coming to it. Either they used that as a way to eat or they helped basically, you know, their size.
But that railroad was suspended a decade ago, right?
Two and a half, probably. But we've been there for more than a.
But do you think really that this pipe would have been?
There is, there was a lot of things done a long time ago that aren't done today.
Are we concerned about any of this, the contamination or anything from the railroad? Would be, everything from the outfall, being a railroad? Do we need to be concerned about?
It's been too many years since it's been opened, so doubt it. It's natural state now, there's no railroad type of alles on the public road.
Let's just take a step back. This was added to the list to look at because of the substantial flooding that occurs in a particular area, especially these two properties. And the main intent of adding it was to see, is was the line deteriorated, crushed, not allowing any flow through it, et cetera? And the answer is, it's in good enough shape that whatever flow it can manage is getting through, that correct? That's the answer, that's what we've got from this analysis for this particular occasion.
And really, the inlet that's coming down to Parkmont, that that goes to be mined out, is not making that much worry, just a little bit of that, and that property is still forming. There's a large hill on both sides.
Okay, so we have some answers to that particular pipe, which we didn't have before, gas conditions, et cetera. Just going back to the overall analysis that was done, I mean, just, I'm thinking out loud here, but we had Army Corps do their little pole camera on these inlets, and we had enough concerns about a bunch of inlets on the CMP pipe that we said we needed to do further analysis on prioritization that was done by HRG to pick of the Army Corps data, which ones looked like it would contribute the worst shape. We've now done that, and I feel looking at this information to Chris's comment, overall, it's better than we had overall. We don't see as much deterioration, as much crushed lines, as much problems as our fears had going into this work that's just been done. But what you have seen is in particular, such meadows, as you already know, because of the problems with sinkholes and line collapses that we've had in there, that there is a lot, there's quite a lot of work that needs to be done sooner rather than later. But I'm curious, Mark, when you say some of it can be done by Public Works and some of it would need to be done by, you know, putting out the bid, contractors, are you talking about digging and replacing? Are you talking about lining? Are you talking about both solutions? What, what do you think?
For in-house, it would always be dig and replace. So those 12 areas, some would be dig and replace, some would just be patching. Half of those areas were concrete, like that they had. So some of those 12 areas, there's no issues. Other areas, there was minor damage. One area that was rather large, it's all collapsed.
And we found, we found the one area where it was like crushed by maybe fence post or something like that.
Maybe it was.
Is, is there any of this initial 13 areas that we've looked at that you believe need a project budget for 2024 for a contractor to come in and either replace if you, it's too big a job or that you can handle, or it's more amenable to a lining solution that, you know, would require a contractor?
Are you talking about just the 12 or 13 areas? Are you talking about the three neighborhoods there?
I'm just talking about what we just got reported on, the, the areas that you've looked at that we believe were the highest priority problem areas from the HRG analysis.
Now we can do those all in.
Okay, so if we look at the American Rescue Plan Funds, Mark, you may have not seen this information, but right now, we've got an accounting from my end as to which projects to be completed and which, what kind of funds remain available to continue to rehabilitate stormwater. And beyond, you know, the big one we've done, which is all, which is in the process of being closed down, which is the Ballmer Street culvert replacement, we also have on this list Andrew Drive CMP replacement. What is the status of whether you want that to be all done with a contractor or if there are pieces of it you believe, again, could be done in-house?
I mean, we can, if we can reach a larger pipeline infrastructure, we can do it. All in-house, but it's going to take a while. So we've already done about 160 feet. We've done cross sections to that neighborhood, and it's track was, the plan was provided with snap tape on the long run, this long curve box.
Yeah.
So we took care of the shored runs already.
So that's what's in this anticipated project, correct, Chris?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We had Chris Peterson update the cost estimate based on the work that Mark and his crew have already done. And it actually reduces, it reduces the cost by roughly $100,000. I think this was about $640 in the original budget.
Okay. So this project is allocated against the American Rescue Plan Act, but is it something we're going to proceed with in 2023 or is it a 24 project?
I think we put it on the back burner because the Ballmer project came in.
Yeah. Okay. So if we were to proceed with it as planned currently, allowing for Locksley to also be charged to the American Rescue Plan Fund, we would still have a balance of about $314,000 left.
Is there any outstanding invoices added to this number?
This is what Christine's estimated as the expected project cost that's still in process. So it is, they made up the invoice yet, but it's the full project cost. So if the CMP work that we've just looked at, that we thought might require projects to be done against it, if you believe that if you go forward in 24, 25, a lot of this, you know, all of this, is what I heard you say, could actually be managed in-house over time. We actually then, we have, to my mind, $314,000 of potential funding for a project that we have yet to define, is that correct? Is there anything that's out there that's unplanned that's come up that you think, well, that, that we know we can't do it in-house, but we should therefore start looking at, you know, what the solution is and how much it might cost? So in other words, another Ballmer Street or another Knollwood or Silver?
Fresh Meadows would be the next, I think, like.
So there is, there is a project in Fresh Meadows that you know you can't do or you want to just view that as a resource for?
Fresh Meadows, we just got the video from Soft Dig. So Fresh Meadows has collapsed, it's all CMP, so some of it will be lined, some of it will be done and replaced.
So the lining you need, this may would be good to hear, Mark, for lining sections of Fresh Meadows.
Right. I think Fresh Meadows would be a good Carol design. And they can come up with a plan. A lot of areas there, a lot of the meadows might not be easements that we have to figure out, et cetera.
Does it require more video work than we've done today to get a handle on, are you satisfied that you've videoed enough to know? Other board questions?
The remaining balance that we're figuring out, $314,000, what does this money have to be spent or earmarked to be spent?
They must be allocated by the end of 2024 and spent by the end of 2026. So what the board could do is authorize the reallocation of the cost for Loxley, the Andrew Drive project, and then the balance for Fresh Meadows as Mark allocated, indicated. And as we go through 24, you could reallocate funds accordingly if there's a great, if Mark identifies like something else, or if there's a greater need. Because one of the things we talked about with Andrew Drive when we met on September 25th was that a lot of the complaints that have been received on Andrew Drive were in the cross-sections that they have gone through and replaced. So one thing we talked about doing was allocating the money for Andrew Drive by kind of monitoring the situation and see what other complaints, see if there are any other complaints we receive. And then the board, we can bring that information back to the board and if necessary, reallocate the funds accordingly.
So you think the rest of Andrew Drive doesn't necessarily warrant going ahead and doing the work at this point? You think it's better to do a wait and see?
I mean, if the funds are available, I would do it. I think Fresh Meadows is in good shape.
Okay. So we should really prioritize getting an estimate to do that work, and then see what's left up to that?
Carol's ahead of the game with Andrew Drive. They have no information on Fresh Meadows until we give them the Soft Dig information.
Okay.
I'm just curious, the Fresh Meadows, since it's kind of popped up on the radar here, have we gotten many complaints in that area? I mean, obviously any sinkholes, that would be a complaint.
We've replaced, I measured it, actually today, all our patches. By the last five, six years, 300 feet from the pipe, the Fresh Meadows already.
Is it like, is that about 10% of the pipe over there? Is that like 20%?
We have a total of 300 feet for Fresh Meadows.
But it's a significant, it's a significant amount of work that you've been doing in that area, right?
Yeah, it all depends if, if we have easement, a lot of it, I think a lot of it runs through yards, et cetera, not just the street.
Yeah. Other board questions? Good discussion. Is anyone in attendance who has questions about what we've been discussing, or about the information that's been provided in the packet? Steve?
Yeah, so just so unclear with all this, we had that study done earlier this year. So this is identifying now through television that we have a research problem. So that $40 million number, I think that the engineer came up with? I mean, I'm just trying to head around, maybe this reduces the amount of money we'll spend, or?
So if I remember right, $40 million was more associated with if we went to those areas of the township that had, that had been built in decades ago with almost no stormwater controls, whether they be basins, or undecided pipe, or whatever else? If we had to go in there and have enough ability to manage it, what was the order of magnitude cost to put in it, some current standards there? And that's where I think the kind of $40 million come from.
Okay.
This was a kind of unknown, CMP. If we had to go in and replace feet, hundreds of feet all over the place with CMP, what kind of sticker shop are we going to get? And that's the reason we would continue to progress this level of information. So what I'm hearing tonight is, at least for the selected areas we picked from the HRG analysis is, we may have one, we've got one neighborhood that needs some contractor work, which we may have ARP funds for. And then over the next two, three years, maybe Mark can finish up a lot of the other areas that have less of a problem, but still need fixing, in Fresh Meadows.
In Fresh Meadows?
Yeah, there's still other bits that are out there.
So just curious, like, so do we get to South Penn at some point, or if there are problems of the pipe, you know? I know we found the grant, I think you have the grant.
So that's still in flight, right? So we've applied for the grant for North Hills.
Right.
November time frame, you may hear about that. One thing that when we go through the project, public discussions, the board's going to have to say earmark the balance of, assuming we get the grant, earmark the balance in capital plans over there. Assuming we do get the grant, we can do that, but it's a piece of that, a major piece of that project.
Okay. This, this helps kind of move along with all, with some of these places that are?
A lot of moving, a lot of balls in the air when it comes to stormwater. CMP is one, Old Neighbors with nothing is another, like North Hills.
Okay.
Compliance with our MS4 permit is another area that we can have to need to spend money on, so.
Just wait and see.
Sure. Yes, definitely.
I know what's been discussed in the past, but what happened with the Army Corps of Engineers contract? For so many years, I always asked, what is this $50,000 for Army Corps of Engineers? So that went back five, six, seven years, and they were supposedly doing all this.
So they, they, remember, they were only inspecting the inlets as a distance. And they only use, were using a pole camera, they did not have the sophisticated line cameras that were used in this latest Soft Dig work. So it was really a survey of all this CMP piping, et cetera, that's throughout the township. We, we had more data from that. The Army Corps was in this start-stop mode, COVID, you know, COVID came along and nothing was done for two years. And the board decided that we would no longer continue to go in that direction, that we wanted to look at the data that we already got. And we asked HRG to look at it, and they did. And from that analysis, we got this priority list of 13. So there's other data out there that was not the A priority, but B priority on CMP piping. And now we just build down further tonight in this discussion around the A priorities that we looked at. And actually ban out the business patch perhaps in 2024.
Has everyone seen the contract that we had with Army Corps?
Yeah, we had it.
It was kind of a year, you didn't think?
It was a four-year, $200,000 contract.
Mm-hmm. It was a split, it was a split cost between the township and the Army Corps. And there was $200,000 paid for by the Army Corps, $200,000 paid for by the township over four years, I believe, I was like.
It wasn't supposed to be, but with COVID, it ended up being.
It was extended.
And the, the work wasn't finished, but we cut it off.
Well, but we did get more than we thought we'd got, yeah. It was a matter of not understanding.
We had more data from them, but the work of doing all the inspection wasn't finished. And if you remember, we kept budgeting $50,000 for it, and then nothing was either happening, or, and so we just said, we've got what we've got, and we're going to push on with analyzing that in more detail. So that's what we're going to do. We're not doing anything else with the Army Corps. It was too slow and fast for our liking. We liked what we did with Soft Dig. But perhaps another question I have for you, Mark, the, when we first engaged with this, we were a little concerned about that they would be jetting this CMP pipe and potentially cause us some problems and issues in clearing it out to get the video camera in and causing, you know, more destruction, if you like, of the pipe. Did that not happen, or did they just use back to get?
No, we had to re-jet, and then we hammered.
But overall, that process was, did you have any concerns?
I'm not a big fan of jetting CMP. I always hold the eyes just below pressure. I think sometimes jetting damage already, you know, one damage CMP pipe. So I kind of gear the money, the tier of budget for that work, I try to gear that more toward concrete.
Okay.
Otherwise, we're just going to cause problems unnecessarily.
Yes, either we use and jet, or secure, I don't know, or contract after stuff happens, you know? It's not jet, like, it keeps me in that conversation. So why were we under the impression that this area that ended up not being as bad? Robert gave us the impression that it was going to be bad. Is it because we didn't have the line cameras, we could only see, sorry? So that's a bit of, we're told to assume that it was going to be bad all the way through, and it just ended up not being that way?
From remembering what Sean Fabian from HRG said, so they had a pole camera, they could only see so far down, and they didn't clean anything before they went down. So that kind of muddied the water, so to speak.
I guess my question is, should we expect the same result from any of the other priority sites?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, definitely. Priority A, which is what these were, these were the ones that based on the inlet, pole camera, or data from the Army Corps, HRG said these, these might have long runs that could be in bad shape based on what we saw from that data. It wasn't as bad as before. So the ones they did select, I'm not saying it's going to be perfect, hopefully. You never know, because you could have an inlet that's okay, and then deep down in the actual line.
It's just going to be interesting to see if it correlates, if it's actually?
I consider the 12 minor issues, I consider the three neighborhoods, Fresh Meadows is an issue, not a minor issue. You see by the, if you look at the video, look at the pictures, you'll actually see the collapses and the separation of the pipe, so there's here is.
And one of the, one of the things we discovered in going through this process was a lot of, like Mark said earlier on, a lot of the areas that we thought were CMP and were degraded pretty significantly ended up being concrete pipe. I think seven out of the 12 were concrete.
And that tells you that that pole camera's not seeing very well, like it said, they think it's concrete pipe. They think it's CMP pipe, but it's actually concrete pipe.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Is anyone else with a question? So in terms of where we are with this, we've got, we've had the discussion, we've got the analysis, we've talked about the American Rescue Plan Funds as a source of ability to tackle Fresh Meadows, the lane work in 24, Carol Engineering, get them involved. Do we have a clear direction for you, Mark?
I think that's a good idea.
Ryan, you'll be with us?
Yeah. Do they, do they, just make do to allocate the budget?
Yeah, so my question to the board is, are we for 2024, so I can talk to Christine, we are going to allocate Andrew Drive for 2023, we'll pay for Loxley out of ARPA, and then the balance remaining will put towards Fresh Meadows for work, Carol Engineering, and potential construction by a contractor, or in-house.
Yeah, I think to Mark's point, keep the allocation against Andrew Drive, against ARPA, but not necessarily go forward with that until we've got further along with understanding what Fresh Meadows might take, right?
Because we can always come back and have the board reallocate the funds accordingly.
Yeah?
Yep. Under the second-class township code, you can do budget reallocations.
I have a question going back to Matt Light Street. So that initial replacement was $300,000, is that what you did?
That was budgeted in the Capital Reserve Fund, $397,000.
And now it's down to $60,000, so are we still going to use Capital Reserve, or should we use ARPA funds for that?
That, I mean, it was, it, we have a lineup set up specifically for that project in the Capital Reserve Fund. It may be best just to kind of leave that one where it is. Then you have to, then you're talking about crossing funds with how things are being spent. With Loxley, that kind of just came up.
Yeah.
And we were, originally, we were going to use the balance that was left over.
Yeah. I, I would rather is, if we know we have stormwater projects that we have to do, like Loxley, like Matt Light Street, my Light Street's history, we just talked about that, but we should try and use up the ARPA funds, I want to say as soon as possible, on the projects we need to do, and just get on with doing it. Because every time, you know, we start just waiting and allocating and letting things dry out, every time we have to do it, or every year on ARPA, you know, it's only $2,500, but it's $2,500 we don't have to spend if we get on and do the projects we know we have to do.
What are you suggesting?
Just what we're doing. Just confirming what we're doing. I'm just saying, you know, the Fresh Meadows, identify what needs to be done, get on and do it. And if Andrew's Drive is, is still empty, then what else should we be doing in 24 potentially, if there's still a balance left? I'm not saying that we'll be able to do Fresh Meadows, but we'll see. Okay. All righty. Next up is agenda item number eight, discussion and possible awarding of the multi municipal bid for roadway deicing salt. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, for the board this evening are the results of the, are the results of the multi municipal bid for roadway deicing salt. So we go in with East Ocean Township and West Town Township. West Town Township handles this bid for the municipalities that are involved. The low bidder is Eastern Salt Company in the amount of $65.90 per ton. I provided a copy of the bid tabulations. This price represents a 14% price decrease per ton compared to the previous bid. And speaking with Mark, he estimates that we would purchase, we would purchase 500 tons. That being said, Mark did advise that the township didn't purchase any roadway deicing salt through the consortium this past season due to the mild winter. And additionally, we have approximately 1,600 tons on site. We are not obligated to purchase anything through, through this contract, unlike the Coast Star's contract, where we do have an obligation to make purchases. Additionally, I've just kind of added this for information. Mark has been evaluating our natural deicing liquid bid, which we would traditionally issue around this time. However, we do have roughly $500,000 on, 500, 5,000 gallons on hand, plus an additional 1,000 gallons in totes. And he does not believe that we would need to, we need to bid this out this year. Because it currently outlines a minimum purchase of 4,500 gallons. But we may encounter a storage issue. So based on this, we believe going with the price for the consortium bid in line with the, in line with West Town Township, who I believe awarded it last night, would be appropriate.
Thanks, Chris. Does board have any comments or questions?
How much salt was used last year?
Um, I don't, I have to go through, it's kind of hard to tell how much is used. I can't tell you how much is purchased.
Yeah, how do you know how much they have?
It's basically an estimate, like we have probably eight locations, or keep it, we say, all right, that bin holds 300, 300, 300, 300. Those two hold, two months, two months, hold four, holds like five. So we look at it, estimate it, after every storm, you might estimate how much was used, or is no.
Well, this is a way, though, is, I mean, they're, they're going out, the salt is being spread, I guess, if you can go back and see in the days that there were sending trucks down, and trucks on that, and we're figuring out this, someone, how, how often it was being used.
Yeah. So every time they go out in salt, it's, you're probably going, if you hit every route in township, it's probably around 100 tons.
Okay. And we can always go back and buy the, usually, I mean, it is, right? Like, say during the winter, middle of the winter, we had really bad winter, we used it a whole lot, we can always go back and purchase it then, right?
Oh, yeah. That's why we have the two, two contracts. So the Coast Star's contract, we had 500 tons, like five consortium. I just, they ask how much you want, it's like 500, it's basically 500, West Town was 200. I'm not obligated to purchase that 500 tons. It's just a supplemental, because years, as years go, there's some short, salt shortages. So it was tough to get salt, so they added West Town, so I do that extra contract.
No, uh, Mark, she was asking about the, the beach use.
Beach use, beach use.
We don't do that.
We can go back in the middle of the year if we need it to order it.
We could, we could go bid in January, February, anytime, but right now, I'm loaded, there's two past two winters been.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just following up on the other questions, I mean, you have 1,600 tons right now in salt. What's your capacity, what's your storage capacity? I mean, how many, how many, what tons can you handle?
We can go up to close to 2,500 tons.
Really? So that would be like 25 snowstorms you could handle in a year, right? That's, we're looking at 100 tons per snowstorm?
25 rounds.
25 rounds? Do you have to do multiple rounds in any one?
Sometimes, sometimes, yeah. Salt only lasts so long.
That was my next question. How long can this stuff stay in the shed?
If you let salt down, and it gets spilled, if you're getting freezing raining, two hours.
Oh, I see. Well, how long can you keep it in storage shed, though? I mean, does it also get itself open to the elements and?
Pretty much forever, everything's covered. We have three bins that we park, but everything's covered. I think it lasts for a long time.
So did we order the 800 tons last?
Yes. Really, the light, light winters, you tend to use more salt. Not more salt, but the little one-inch storms, heavy storms. When they have this, we tend to battle that little bit of salt, and then you'll start plowing, we get like two ounces. So the heavier storms kind of take a toll on the trucks, but a lot. But it's been light in the past.
So if we get another 500,000, that would pretty much get you up to full capacity, or pretty much close to.
You'll only buy this if you need it, correct?
I'll probably spend $33,000 in November, early December, stock.
Yeah.
And then we'll go.
For this contract, if we prove it, right?
Probably Coast Star.
From Coast Star.
Co-Stars contract.
Which is the 800 you committed? Yeah.
And the price is cheaper, yeah?
Um, I think it was $4 or $76 if mine, I think last year it was 72. But when the Co-Stars contract goes out, all of Chester County pays the same, every county gets one or more.
So we don't have to approve that, it's a Co-Stars free price. You just go, you just come up with the amount that you want. So the only ones approved is this supplemental if you should need it, correct?
Right, yeah. Co-Stars, they sign up in the spring, every year. And that runs from July to July, 2019.
Any other questions from the board? Again, I will make a motion to approve the supplemental salt purchase if needed from Eastern Salt Company in the amount of $65.90 a ton, up to 500 tons.
I'll see you.
Thank you, John. Standing for a comment, some questions, some motions. Is there public comments or questions? Sergeant?
This is the salt that I keep reading about that is so terrible before the big garden, or getting high street, but is there a third way? It's like, do we have sand and have salt and put sand down when?
Well, beach use is supposedly used with salt, reduces the amount because it allows it to stay on the roadway and not bounce off into the sides of the road, gray line.
Yes, and it lowers the reach point of the order. The goal of using it, the deicing, is to keep less salt. So that's the goal. All the guy settings are for a low setting every time they go out.
A material right, Marty, and this is actually something I came to the town council earlier this year. And there was a presentation by somebody who was doing research on that exact issue. And it really is a problem. And I think that it's something that the Sustainability Committee might look at and talk about, and look into other options. And there are ways that we can reduce salt, would you, Jerry? Is there a question?
I mean, we could add cinders to the salt and that would lower, yeah, we could want to have cinders to all its place.
There's no easy solution, because the laws, they don't.
Yeah.
I'm actually pretty fan of cinders.
You're not?
I can't throw sandpaper brick to apply it, the residents won't be able to.
Yeah.
Okay, why? Because it works?
It ends up in people's yards and the cars will run over it and they just don't like it.
Well, the salt corrodes their cars?
Yeah, but it makes, makes the driving a little safer.
Maybe it's just like a reconsideration that before the guys go out, like, there's got to be a balance of, and I understand it's for safety reasons, but is, is it really necessary if needed? Or are we just going out and spreading it because there might be a storm or there's, I, I don't know the specifics, I'm not pretending to, but some kind of discussion where, you know, we, we bent one ton going out on a certain day or not do a certain street, make sure, it might be snowing over on this side of the township, but not that side of the township. I don't know how you fly all those things, but anyway, I just think that.
There are communities that are sort of like addressing the issue in different ways. And I think that it's something we have to really continue to do.
Well, you're good with how you manage the crews now relative to trying to minimize salt usage, right?
Yeah, I, I tell them every time, life, life, life. But ultimately, my, my job is to make roads safe. So there's a balance, they've got to find some way.
Well, I will say we have the cleanest roads in any township, so we'll cut it, you know, you do. You can see right where the line ends. So I think we do a really good job with it, excellent job.
Okay, point taken. Do some research for it, find a solution, great.
All right.
Anyone else with a question on the motion? Okay, ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing on the motion passes 5-0. Next is agenda item number nine, discussion impossible awarding of West Ocean Township's sludge hauling bid for the wastewater treatment plant. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, for the board this evening is consideration to award the township's 2024 sludge hauling contract. The bids were open on September 19th. There were four bids received this fall, as I provide the bid tabulations to the board. The bids for the first option, which was a one-year contract, were prices per load ranging from $556 per load for waste management to $800 per load for Denali Water Solutions. And then for option two, three-year contract, were six hundred, low, per load was $601.67, and the high was $850 per load. The current apparent load bidder represents a 30% per load price increase compared to the current contract with Charles Blazinski Disposal Company. As previously noted, the, there's an option to award either a one or three-year contract. Reviewing the low bidder information, if the board were to award a three-year contract, the price would be a 40% per load increase. However, speaking with Mr. Mafa, we do not recommend awarding a three-year contract just because this is a vendor we've never worked with before, even though they're a very big company and reputable. We just have never worked with them before, is that correct, Mike?
Correct. How come Charles Blazinski didn't bid?
Yeah, I guess it was never set on their part.
Do you want us to reject the bid and rebid it?
My, maybe like.
They banned the chopping trash, right?
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to get involved in.
They did a great job with the trash.
They reported by the company.
We can cut that.
Not the personal, but you know, that.
It's nothing to do with that, too. I have, I have no problems with my trash.
Well, that's, we, our contract is with Republic.
Yeah, it's different, different company.
Well, I'm just saying, there's a whole, not trash, there's a whole, how we manage it.
So let's go back to this. Do you believe Charles Blazinski did not know the bid on this project, on this? So we could reject these bids and ask for rebid. I mean, 30% price increase is a lot. And you have to with Charles Blazinski's?
Yeah, they've been our, our caller for 15 years.
What makes you think that Blazinski would come in and?
I don't know. I'm sure they came in December.
Much lower.
They started, they've been lower.
Why is it more for three-year contracts than a one-year?
I guess they're a risk of what prices might be.
Um, okay. Also, and Blazinski, you see the results of this and then coming underneath, it's very.
Well, they all, they could all rebid. They could all say, I've got to be careful, they'll all rebid lower. I'm suggesting to the board it's an option. How much time do you have, Mike? The business for 24, right?
How much timing wise you have?
We have till the end of year.
Yeah.
Okay. Would you, do you like to have Blazinski bid on this?
I mean, it's a risk, I mean, historically speaking, they've been more than everyone else.
What has been their past performance?
I'm sorry?
What has been their past performance? Blazinski, have they?
I haven't heard about those yet. It's, we've got a good relationship with them.
I can just tell you from social media, Blazinski, over the past year, has been going through a lot of changes. People making a lot of complaints about not getting their trash to be picked up. I don't know, they may have a separate division for sludge, I don't know. But apparently the, the original founders had retired or something like that. And companies go through a transition. So you might really say I can't.
By what's our budgeted amount for trash haul, for sludge hauling?
Uh, I think it's about 100, just for.
Yeah, off the tipping fee, just for the.
Oh, I think it's like 30.
Just for the trap, for sludge hauling?
Yeah.
And so it's going up from, that, that's your new budget based on these prices, or it's?
No, I didn't, I thought it was based on like a 5%, 6% increase. So this will cost us compared to this year, like this year's number of loads, about 25, 26, 27,000.
Okay, so I'm not hearing much support for rebidding, so the board?
It's just one year, it's.
Yeah, it's one year. So approving the lowest bid tonight is a $27,000-ish increase in our budget for sewer fund 2024. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. I'll ask if anyone's willing to make a motion then. Whether you want me to rebid or approve the lower bidder.
Is that okay from a ownership perspective?
I mean, it's sad that you can rebid, I just think you have to be careful not to target one particular.
Yeah, that's what I'm, my, my point is, yeah.
Now, I'm trying to see if there's more people willing to bid.
If we rebid it, I mean, all these companies know what the numbers are.
Yeah, so they'll come in lower, right?
I mean, if you believe you have, understand that Charles Blazinski's in trouble, why would you want to, you know, rebid it? If it's like, if you're not going to get any more bids, then, okay.
I mean, this is put out for the public to bid on this way, and they decided not to do it for whatever reason.
I mean, they've had it for every year, they know the cycle, so whatever.
We're early this year.
We're early?
Yeah, I wanted to get ahead of the budget.
And we're kind of targeting that. Of course, we're not going to be careful.
We're not happy with the pricing, we're not happy with the 30% increase based on what costing deals are going up. This isn't tipping fees, this is just a move from the plan to the side.
To rebid, the price might come up.
You could. I mean, you've got a range from 500 to 800, that tells you there's a license.
Do we know what our paper, any municipalities have?
We're only talking for one year here, right? So we just managed to visit a reputable, well-known outfit, been around for a while.
Okay, I'll make the motion to award a one-year contract for the sludge hauling for the wastewater plant to Waste Management and Precipitation, the amount of $556 per load.
Now, so.
Thanks. Any other board comments or questions? Any public comments or questions? Done?
You should, you should consider rebid.
We just had the discussion, I've just made the motion, so, okay. We've understood your opinion, thanks. Anyone else? Okay, ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposed? Hearing on, motion passes 5-0. We have a sludge contract. Okay, next up is agenda item number 10, discussion impossible awarding of West Ocean Township's polyaluminum chloride bid for the wastewater treatment plant. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, for the board this evening is consideration to award the township's 2024 polyaluminum chloride contract. The bids were also open on September 19th. There were two bidders that were received, Univar Solutions Inc. and Holland Company Inc. The price, neither of them bid on the three-year, three-year contract option. The one-year contract option was a low bid from Univar Solutions of $3.69 per gallon. The other bid amount from Holland and Company was $4.10 per gallon. The apparent load bidder is the current provider of this product for the township. And their price per ga, per gallon represents a point one, a 13.78 cents price per gallon increase compared to the 2023 pricing, which is roughly a 4% price increase. So based on these results, we would recommend awarding the 2024 polyaluminum chloride contract to Univar Solutions Inc. based on their bid date, it's September 19th, 2023.
Thanks, Chris. Does the board have any questions?
Well, I'll make the motion to take the Univar Solutions.
Okay, I have a motion for the low bid from Univar Solutions. I will second the motion. Any board comments or questions on the motion? Any public comments or questions? Okay, ready to take a vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing on, the motion passes 5-0. Agenda item number 11, continued discussion regarding a proposed amendment to the West Ocean Township subdivision and land development ordinance pertaining to electric vehicle charging stations. Chris, do you want to remind the board of our previous conversations on this?
Aye, yes, Mr. Chairman. So before the board this evening is continued discussion regarding proposed amendment to the township's subdivision land development ordinance pertaining to electric vehicle charging stations. An amendment to the township's land use ordinance is pertaining to EV charging stations with the last discussed at the August 15th board meeting. At that time, it was determined that additional review from the township solicitor was necessary and proposed ordinance was referred back to the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Representatives from the SAC met with the township solicitor to review the proposed ordinance. And the proposed ordinance was reviewed by the SAC at their meeting on September 26th, where it was recommended to proceed to the board. That being said, there was considerable discussion, particularly around the percentage of parking spaces that would need to be EV-ready for non-residential development or redevelopment, as well as some of the proposed requirements outlined in the sec, in proposed section V1. As this is a land use ordinance, the municipality's planning code does require vote, review by both the townships and the county planning commission prior to adoption.
Thanks. I remember the last time we had discussed whether this could be done within our zoning ordinance and the recommendation of Kristen. And so, Chris, we moved this to be part of land development.
That's correct.
Who has, who has created the document in the shape it's in now? Is that?
Kristen did.
Kristen did. Kristen, do you, do you have any comments about preparing this relative to other examples you may have seen or general state of EV charging ordinances around the Chester County area?
You're definitely ahead of the game. Phoenixville Borough was one of the ones, I think, that you modeled her after. Borough of Westchester is working on theirs as well. You're a little bit further ahead than, than they are. But no, I think, I think there were some, you know, keeping in your subdivision land development is important because that's where the authority comes under the MVC. And recognizing that if a developer were to push back on some of the requirements, it's something that can be waived. So I think it's inappropriate location, but the, but the substance of it was from your SAC. I mean, that was from the model ordinance. But I just put it into the ordinance format where I think it's appropriate in your code.
Okay. Does the board have any questions or comments on the text of what's in here?
I have a couple of questions on page three of the, it was, section B, electric vehicle charging station installation requirements, just for clarification. In section one, if you have a land development, including redevelopment, with at least 10 required off-street parking spaces, 5% of the parking spaces shall be equipped with a level-two charging station. In section two, in addition to that, if the land development or redevelopment has at least 150 parking spaces, an additional 5% of the parking spaces shall be equipped by a level-three charging station. So we're talking that in total, 10% of the required parking spaces for a land development with 150 parking spaces or more would have to be dedicated for a level-two, a level-three charging station. Am I reading that correctly?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's additive. I think if it's.
Well, that's one question, because in addition, it says in section two, this requirement is in addition to other level-two EV PS connection requirements outlined in section 7236 dot 1B1, which is what I just read. So it looks like it's going to be fine and fine. 5% parking spaces have to be level-two, and like we said, have to be level-three. Just want to clarify.
Yeah, this is, this came up with our SAC meeting, and we had a discussion about if it wasn't prepared.
So that's.
Now, I didn't change the language, so that's.
Which is, is fine, that's what we're talking about. But I just want to make that clear, if you all understand.
Yeah, this, one of the comments that was added to the draft, somebody added that sentence. And then somebody wrote, recommend the board, board supervisors discuss and determine appropriate requirements. So somebody, I don't know who made edits to this at the SAC level, but the draft I had had edits made and that sentence was added.
That was me.
Oh, okay.
And that came out of the, that came out of the initial SAC discussion, trying to determine an appropriate level. So we determined that that should be a policy determination by the board. That was at our initial discussion in July, I believe it was, when we first discussed the ordinance.
So is it additive or not?
It would be additive, as I'm reading it, as I'm reading it now, I was incorrect, so yes, it would be additive. So essentially, if you're proposing at least 10 required off-street parking spaces, you'd have to have five of those with no less than a level-two charging, charging station. If you then have a development that has 150 parking spaces, not only do you have to have the 5% as dedicated level-two stations, but you have to have 5% dedicated as level-three charging stations. So Mr. Holland is correct, so it would be 10%, but at different, at different charging tiers.
I'll be a person, I'm no expert in all this EV stuff. I mean, it's coming on so quickly, the technology is, is advancing, the niche is balanced. I would think that level-threes would be the norm at a certain point at these kind of places. Because you're only going to go, let's say, at the point, we just, we approved that for later. If that would apply, would we have that, you know, both, we, level-two and level-three? If that would apply, would we have that, you know, both Level 2 and Level 3? Because it's going to have like 1,400 parking spaces. I mean, you could be in a target for what, 10, 15, 20, maybe half an hour tops. So, you know, plugging into a Level 2 charging station, you're really not going to get much out of it. You're only talking like, for every hour, you get like maybe 20 miles out of hours' charging time to a Level 2 charging station. Compared to a Level 3, you know, it's charging time in half an hour's time. So, I would think in the long term, you're looking at Level 3 is going to be more of the norm. Again, it's moving so quickly.
I think one of the major components of this that we were talking about at our last SAC meeting was, is at least 20% of, is that too much? Is that overkill? To require that many charging, dedicated charging spots for parking? I don't know.
I can only say a couple of things about how the process went and.
Do you want to put in my, Henry?
When this first came up, Henry, it was Henry. When this first came up, we considered this on basically expedited basis for 90 minutes in the previous SAC meeting. And then we sent it to you, and there were some various legal issues that Kristen had brought up, which had to be resolved. And then it went, let's see, it went back to the SAC, and it was the understanding that we need to look at this more carefully, because it was complicated. And so, a small group was set up to do this, and we got together and basically talked about various concerns. But we decided to finalize the legal aspects of the proposal of the ordinance, and that was sent back to the SAC once again. And at this point, the SAC discussed it for a while, and it seemed to be something that we couldn't wrap our arms around. And so, we knew that this was on an expedited basis, so we wanted to send it off to you to discuss it. But I think there are some issues here that perhaps haven't really been addressed yet. And I bring up a couple of things. First of all, when Westchester considered what they were going to do with the EV-ready requirement, which is 20% of the commercial, industrial, and office would be required to have EV-ready, they considered, would that be a useful way to go? Now, if according to the Pacific Northwest National Laboratory, they did an assessment of how many different types of EV charging systems would you need in various places, and they found that 78% by 2030, they figured that 78% of the EV charging would be at home. 30% would be at work. 9% would be in various commercial, like a gas station type of situation. And 1% would be on the road with high-capacity EV charging with a Level 3. So, when you consider the EV charging ordinance that we have here, it sometimes doesn't fit with what is needed by the people who have to put in these parking spaces. And I give you a couple of examples. If you had a EV, if you had a new parking area for a Goshen Shopping Center, that's 1,400 spaces, you'd have to have about 600 EV-ready Level 2 slots. People come into the shopping center for 15 minutes or half an hour, and a Level 2 doesn't do them a great deal of good. So, the question is, why do you put in 600, 500, 40 amp circuits for sites that may never be used? Another issue is, if you have a company going in with their reserved parking space for their employees, they're required to have 5% of EV charging at Level 2, and then 5% at at least Level 3. Level 3 costs 25, 40% more to charge at than Level 2. And what you have for a work situation is you have Level 2, so that people can come to work, they lug in their car, they go to work, and they come home. They go home at the end of the day with a charge. They may not want, for 150 spaces, eight Level 3 required parking spaces. So, and a third option is for Wawa, where they're required under this regulation to have four Level 2 sites, when what they really need is one or two Level 3 sites. And yet, it's requiring them to have more Level 2 than they would want, or go up for the same number for Level 3. And that may not be a good fit. So, I think what the EV charging ordinance right now doesn't really address is what do the people who are either going to construct these facilities want to do with their EV charges? So, that's, and I would recommend that that be considered either by this group or sent back to committee to consider those issues.
Henry, I totally agree with you. I thought up the SAC mainly in B1, where it's at a minimum of Level 2. And my concern is the same concern you have. The requirement is in locations, you're going to be useless. And somebody said, well, it's a minimum of Level 2. Well, my concern is, if it's a minimum, they have to spend the money, they're probably going to put the minimum in. So, if we change that to a Level 3 and maybe consider the percentages we're using for the parking, I feel more comfortable with it.
Just know that the authority is in the MPC that says that your SADO can encourage the use of renewable energy. So, I cannot sit here today and tell you 100% that if you have a requirement that mandates a certain level that ends up making a project cost considerably more, that the developer won't challenge that. Now, I have, in conversations, talked to people that, you know, Phoenixville Borough, for example, I asked them how it's going with their ordinance, and they said that their ordinance, the feedback they've received from developers, it's what they would do anyway. It's what the industry and the market is dictating. But I just want to be clear that right now, the MPC and the other state laws says that you may 100% for sure mandate this. It says you can provide in your SADO provisions to encourage renewable energy. And that's why, just keep in mind that somebody may come in and say, you don't have the legal authority to make me put in X number of Level 3, because that, because, for example, we're at a, you know, our use, we've pulled our employees, nobody drives an EV, we don't want it, we're not letting the public use it, and we're not going to spend that extra money. So, that could happen, and you just have to be prepared to, you know, have that discussion at that time. But I think what you're saying is a really important point, that if, you know, these, I don't know where these numbers came from, and, you know, practically speaking, does it work for what you're trying to encourage? And I think that's what we're studying again.
I think, I absolutely agree. I think the market is dictating that everyone's moving in this direction anyway. And I also believe that, as a new EV owner myself, I charged up at the Wawa, and it was quick, it was fast. I charged up at the Level 2 park, and it was slower. I think these are going to be plentiful. Also, technology's going to change, and I also agree that I don't think that we have the ability to necessarily mandate this. But there are things that people have done, and I looked into this. For example, there's a, somewhere in Georgia, they included an incentive to have each EV space counted as three spaces toward the redevelopment. So, I don't know if you can play with things like that.
Sure, you can incentivize, absolutely.
I think that there's some wiggle room there, where we can offer those incentives. But I think the developers are going to put charging stations in that they need and want, that their employees want.
I think that, again, just talking to Will Williams, the Sustainability Director for the Borough, his biggest push and his biggest concern, and I know it's a little bit different environment, is just multifamily. So, if you're getting multifamily development, and people want to live in apartments and have EVs, where are they going to charge? And so, that's really their push and their focus. That may be, again, just something to really think about in terms of a use that you're really going to, you know, want to encourage or incentivize, for example.
Well, in our Sustainability Committee, we talked about that, too. I think all of us who are on the same page, and multifamily is a different situation. I mean, there are these, and that needs to be true as such, because there are going to be a lot of people living in multifamily situations that are going to have EVs, and you charge out. And so, I think that should be its own focus. And when it comes to requiring commercial properties to install, even if you don't think that that's in our ability to do that, we can certainly incentivize it. That's where I am with this. So, I don't know if you guys want to send us back to the SAC to talk about it a little more.
The SAC supports mandating charging in new construction. Just want to make sure that it fits what is needed for that construction.
In your discussions at the SEC, has there been any research into other areas? Like somebody mentioned, Georgia, maybe California, that's maybe a little bit ahead of the curve on all this? Where we can find, yeah, some of these municipalities out there, how have they structured their ordinances? How would they?
Yeah, but understand that you're bound by the MPC, and those states aren't. So, your powers as second-class township are limited to what the MPC allows you to do.
Right.
But those states don't have it, that's what I'm saying. They might have enabling legislation that gives them broader power.
There's a lot of states like Jersey and Georgia that actually are constrained similarly to the way that we are in Pennsylvania. And they have found, I mean, they've structured ordinances that are done. So, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, and there is a lot of ways that everybody could do, and other ordinances we could look at, but I think.
That's what I'm getting at. I mean, I think a lot of other companies have done.
Well, we've looked at California, various areas of California, and a number of cities throughout the United States. And they all sort of pick at, okay, what percentage of this for EV-ready, what percentage for this EV available at Level 2, Level 3? And they're all moving in that direction of identifying what percentage. And it varies a bit. One has, let's see, California, one part of California, the overarching part, has a system by which you could trade out five EV-ready for Level 2 or Level 3. So, it tries to equate the usefulness of a, have a throughput of EV 3 versus EV 2, and tries to figure a trade-off there. I mean, there are some, those are some of the ways in which we've tried to slice and dice it. But it's basically, everybody's sort of trying to figure about the same thing.
So, where are we this evening? I mean, obviously, it sounds like I'm hearing that the board believes there's more work needed to get this to a place. Maybe it's not about things specific with percentages, given the complexity of types of uses that there exist across commercial, and things like that. You treat certain things like multifamily, like, is there some specific need?
Well, multifamily, well, they just pretty cut and dry.
Yeah, well, I think so, drove us to kind of say, is this something we can do? If we would get, we have been getting redevelopment proposals on a hold by, that, you know, whether it's the Aldi or Target or whatever else, we had no way of saying, you know, we would ask the question, are you looking at EV charging? And most likely so, and actually, it's not the same, right?
True, but then again, Wawa just took it upon itself.
And the shopping center said they was going to do it, and I think they were going to do that independently. I remember that Acme said that they wanted it. That's what Mr. Robinson said, and thought that they had already explored that because of Acme wanting it.
Or you just made it simple and take it out.
You said that, but I'm not sure.
You're pushing them to it.
It's easy, I think, and they have a specific plan. When we have these opportunities, they come along, and then they're gone, and it's approved, and it is what it is. And then you're left to the market. You know, the market says they want it, and they may come back and say, well, what are you charging it? But there isn't a dialogue with a make or an incentive to sort of points of a make.
Well, we're trying to, we're trying to move quickly and get this out there, but at the same time.
Right, exactly.
These issues. And one of the things that would be useful, and I've tried to do it, and I get these protocols, what I call into places like Bardovania or Liberty Properties and things like that. But it'd be really useful to figure, to find out what they're thinking their needs are going to be.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, if you can talk to a traffic engineer, if there's been any studies done along the lines of what is the market suggesting? Or, you know, if you're going to build an office building, or if you're going to build a shopping center?
For, a good example, so, for example, Google, at their main site, part of that is California now, they only require, they only have 5% dedicated spots. They just did a workplace study. So, people are doing workplace studies to see how many employees are going to be paid that, or how much they're going to be dedicated to that. The point is, the people are going to charge at home. I mean, that's the reality that we're looking at, is that new construction.
Or go and make it simple and just say that they have to have electric charge, and let the developer determine, the developer determine.
That's what I was thinking. I was thinking that they could provide to you market evidence of what the demand is.
And then the market's going to change.
And then show you that, and you can sort of fact-check that, do your own, and come back, and then there's a dialogue of, the developer's saying, well, we think that the market's wanting 5%. And you're saying, well, okay, what, where's your proof of that? Show us what you're looking at.
Let them come to us with the perspective of the market.
It's along the lines of the way the Borough changed their parking requirements in their zoning, was rather than say, okay, for every type of use, this is the minimum number you need, they're asking a developer to provide data as to what that use dictates for demand for parking, for daycare, for example. They have to provide you evidence of, and there's the IT, Institute of Transportation Engineers, that collects that data on what is the parking demand for various uses. So, that's the way the Borough is going about the parking. I don't know if that same type of analysis would apply to what is the market requesting as far as EV?
I think it would. I think we could wait for it. We're not going to be able to, no matter how much research you do, whatever we nailed down in the document, it's not going to be a specific need on anyone coming forward.
And the market's going to continually evolve.
So, we need something that has the core dialogue and say, what is your, you know, incentive, without it being restricted, probably.
Yeah, I think it's a lot simpler. And as the market evolves, things will change, and we can consider it.
So, I'm hearing that the board's going to get you back to you, Henry, at the SAC, to continue to try to reshape this. I think I don't know how else to suggest you get help, but it sounds like there are a lot of things and different approaches that could be incorporated. You don't get too upset at the board.
I think we can combine a lot of this, rescheduleize, and sort of make it simple like that, too, a lot of categories.
Well, we, I tried to separate the industrial office from commercial facility. That wouldn't work. If there's any way that to figure a different way of requiring commercial versus work plus.
Okay, so there's more work to do. Is there anyone else who's here, Nigel, has a comment to consider, and the SAC is thinking you to work on this? Okay, Doug?
Well, it's one thing to incentivize this, but if there's any kind of mandate, because there's a lot of considerations. If you're going to put in charge.
If you're going to put a charge out, no large parking lot, there's going to be electric losses and there's going to be accident considerations, safety considerations. You got that, you got the technical things. I would say, if you want to try to convince a builder, but force them to take on this expense, because in planning commission, we talk about parking, planning, traffic flow, pedestrian safety. This is kind of another area. If a business wants to do this, to attract customers and make, make a few bucks off of it, that's fine. But I would really be careful about mandate. I mean, I don't know, that's very harsh. That's all.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Doug. Okay, well, we want to next agenda item. Thank you, Henry. Agenda item number thirteen.
Twelve.
Twelve. Twelve. Discussion on possible approval of 2023 Farm Fire Relief Distribution to Good Fellowship Ambulance Company, Goshen Volunteer by a company in Westchester. This is our annual allocation of funds received from the state Farm Fire Relief Distribution. The amount of $223,790.21. And there is an allocation proposed to Good Fellowship, Goshen Volunteer, and Westchester Volunteer. Chris, could you just remind the board what the allocation is based on?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know a specific basis. However, I know this was discussed around this time last year when this came up. Previously, I believe it was allocated, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, that it was split 50/50 between Goshen and Westchester. And it was determined a number of years ago that that wasn't equitable. So that's where a portion was carved out for Good Fellowship to recognize their contributions to the service of the township. And it has remained that way ever since. It's been quite some time. And I remember when we had this discussion last year, there were representatives from all three entities here and it was discussed that they believe that this is a fair distribution of these funds.
I know last year we discussed this with the Coalition, just wanted to get up against this to see if we needed to change anything. And then last year, they said they did not. Do you think we need to bring it up with the Coalition again this year based on the circumstances and the costs and so forth?
I'll let it, this year, I would let it be the way it is personally. It might be readjusted based on the areas that each township, I would recommend, probably just go ahead with it.
It's more like a 60/40 split, right? I mean, as far as the population of the township being serviced by West Goshen and Good Fellowship compared to Goshen.
Correct. Right. That's not what the formula says right now, but there was a, years ago, Westchester got more money than the West Goshen did because of zip codes, okay? Population was a lot towards zip codes. So I think this is why the allocation changed.
But Steve, did I get some of the history correct?
Okay. Thank you.
I understand.
Thank you.
Chris, have you informed the heads of these organizations about the proposed distribution?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. The board here, is someone wanting to make a motion to distribute the funds according to the memorandum and the separate report about the public information?
I'm in.
Thank you. Second?
A second.
Any board comments or questions? Any public comments or questions? Everybody take the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Turn to opposition. Here now, the motion passes 5-0. Agenda item number thirteen, discussion on possible approval of 2023 pension plans to need allocation payment. Chris, could you just remind the board about the annual received from the state of the state aid for pensions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So before the board this evening is the 2023 state aid allocation and payment for authorization to distribute. The funds must be dispersed by the township, to the township's pension funds within 30 days per seat. Our finance director, Christine Riffey, had prepared the attached worksheet outlining the distribution of the state aid. The total amount received is $722,658.14, with proposed distribution as follows. Police Pension Fund, $187,489.06. Administration Roads Pension Fund, $394,713.04. And Sewer Pension Fund of $140,456.05. The total MMO for 2023 across the township's three pension funds is $1,146,407. And the state aid received covers 63% of the 2023 MMO. So this includes the 2023 MMO calculation and has been allocated, this was included in the 2023 MMO calculation, was allocated in the budget accordingly. The distribution recommendations are based on the percentage that each individual pension fund makes up of the MMO allocation.
And this is always, it's always this time of year that we receive the state aid rise, so we don't change.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Does the board make comments or questions on the information?
I think for 2022, wasn't the state aid was covering about 57% of the MMO? Did we get an increase in the amount of money this year from the state or did our MMO go down? What happened?
I believe it did, I believe it went up a little bit, but I don't, I have to go back and look.
Does that make a 5% difference from 2022 to 2023? So you think it may have been increased that much?
Perhaps, I'd have to go back and look at it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. How has the drop program affected what's required?
Well, the actuary, the actuary, if you look at the drop calculation, obviously it increases the obligations of the pension fund because it's an additional payout. So it's been incorporated in the MMO calculation. Is there any quicks?
Quite again, historical, like, over the last five years, that it's been affecting how four years, whatever it's been, just to see what the actual cost is. Would that look to have when you renew the contract?
Yeah, so we have information about the actual payouts. It's all based on the age of the current police department, you know, where they are. But the actual calculation sees everybody, when reaching the normal retirement age, will go into drop. So it's a, that's the basis, pretty good basis because that's what's happening, so. Any other questions? All right, ready to take the vote? You have no motion?
We have not, we have not made a motion yet, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion to distribute the funds as allocated in the, as allocated to the three different pension funds. Just a second.
I'll second a bit.
Any questions, comment, or motion due to the board or anyone in attendance? Okay, now, ready to take the vote? Chris?
No.
Don't you can take it.
Vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Turn to opposition.
She can tell you to vote.
4-0 for the head. All right, next is agenda item number fourteen. Discussion regarding the budget allocation for the installation of sidewalk on the south side of West Rosedale Avenue. This is a follow-on item for, item that was raised earlier in the year by residents, that Cambridge Hall Apartments, our sidewalk connecting existing sidewalk on Rosedale Avenue to the apartment complex. Chris, could you give me an update? Can you give the board an update, what information is happening?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. So before the board this evening is discussion regarding the budget allocation for the installation of sidewalk on the south side of West Rosedale Avenue. The proposed sidewalk extension would run east and connect the Cambridge Hall Apartments to driveway entrance to the Hick Site Friends Cemetery. By way of background information, representatives from the Cambridge Hall Apartments appeared before the board at the April 18th meeting to discuss the possible installation of the sidewalk connection at this location. And as follow-up to the presentation, the board directed the township staff to work with Carroll Engineering to develop a design plan and construction cost estimate. What's been included in the packet this evening for the board is the survey, is a preliminary survey plan that's been taken by Carroll Engineering's team. There are six items for consideration as part of this, as part of this project. And I've outlined them in amendment to the board. Based on the existing conditions and the needs for the construction, the cost estimate that's been provided is $86,500. I'll note a few of the items that Mr. Peterson has provided to us, which include permanent easement acquisition that would be necessary from the Hick Site Friends Cemetery. He estimates approximately 350 feet of concrete sidewalk as an extension to the sidewalk at the western end of the Cambridge Apartments parcel. Curbing would not be required along the edge of the West Rosedale roadway, that's an assumption he's made. There would be some stormwater management requirements utilizing the simplified method that may be utilized. Brian, do you agree that that could be used in this application?
Yes.
There would need to be two ADA compliant ramps that would need to be incorporated at the cemetery entrance driveway. He's outlined what would be involved in that. And there's also a tree at the intersection that would need to be removed and potentially in place in a landscape bed on the cemetery parcel. So those are the items. And Brian has brought up the preliminary survey plan that Carroll Engineering has completed. Brian, do you have anything to add from your review of the information Chris provided?
Yeah, please note that the $86,000 estimate is just an estimate of cost of construction, not the cost of design services to actually engineer the project. That was just an estimate for what Carroll felt would cost to construct the sidewalk, school water system, and the ramps across the driveway.
Just, there's one on each side of that driveway.
We'll need any, there is none there now. And speaking with John Beswick, our EBA inspector, since that is a public driveway, or a public used to be in a church, we would have to cross it, just to put an EV across it, across the shopping center, like that sidewalk. Since it's not a private driveway, we have to put an EV, that's why we have to touch it.
So it'd be more like $100,000?
No, that's in the $86,000 for construction.
Right, but it's just a design cost.
You think adding the additional 20% to that?
Brian, explain again, which driveway is not a private driveway?
This driveway right here is the drive to a church.
Why is it not a private?
It's a driveway to the cemetery. There's no church, the church is on the opposite side of the Borough at the intersection of New and Rosedale.
John Beswick felt, when we looked at it, that that's why it's in here, because it could constitute, say, public access way.
You mean the driveway to the cemetery? Okay, to the cemetery.
Yes. Is there a legal interpretation needed on that?
I want to talk to John. I'd love to do a lot of interpretation.
So what, the ADA ramps, what, 20, 50 grand does it cost?
I don't know what the individual breakdowns were. They're usually, they can run anywhere from four to 10 grand a piece, depending on how it works involved. On the one side, there is a wall and this side, it's always a wall, so we may be having to do some more reconstruction for the driveway.
My reading, this, that's included in that crush?
Yeah.
It is, I would say if it wasn't necessary, it could not need the ramp. What we're seeing, I'm scared about 10 to 15, I'm sorry.
Maybe, or if we just put, we put the runway on our side. But, John, you're saying you'd ask it for an interpretation of what's?
I think we'd ask this, and we'd do, John, what's, it's powerful.
And this was a estimate that's going to work based upon discussion I had with Chris.
But the problem right here is including side cost, $10,000 in side, whether it's ADA ramps or not, it's in that general.
It's in that general ballpark, yes.
All right, so, boy, what's your thoughts on this information that we now have?
Let me ask you a couple of little questions, you're right. And just as soon to the Streets Department, is there any possibility that any of this work can be done in-house? Mr. Phil, can you hear?
I spoke with Mark about that today, and speaking with him, he doesn't believe so. The Streets Department hasn't done a run of sidewalk this length. They've done small sections of sidewalk, dirt pipe replacements, generally five to 20 feet, but he doesn't feel comfortable doing something this long.
Plus you have ADA.
Yeah, plus, to Tina's point, you also have the ADA compliant ramps that would need to be installed.
And also, what's the story of forest maintenance, snow removal, and any liability if the township would have handled this?
Under Chapter 70 of our code of ordinances, maintenance, snow removal all fall on the property owner. In terms of liability, Chris, please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, I see the only potential liability on the part of the township being that if we are aware of a deficiency such as like a tripping hazard or failure to reduce snow, we don't enforce our ordinance adequately, then that might go with us up to some liability.
Yeah, I mean, I asked the question of, is the sidewalk going to be in the right way or out of the right way? If that was the right way, you need to, you need to negotiate an easement. Typically, in the negotiation of easement, you address those issues. Somebody else say, sure, I'll give you a plan, but I'm not maintaining it and I want you to indemnify me, indemnify me. So, you know, if they, if it was in the right way, I agree with Chris, if your code passes that obligation on the property owner. I also agree with Chris that there are exceptions to our community. Normally, the township is a sovereign community, it's going to try to sue you, but one of the exceptions is if there's a dangerous known condition of a road or sidewalk. So if you know that there's a tripping hazard in this sidewalk, you don't take appropriate measures to fix it and you're going to be potentially liable.
So we had this discussion at the, the last time that we had the property owner in here, and the property owner in the cemetery was here. And they agreed, informally, to sort of share the burden of maintaining the sidewalk, but they were in favor of maintaining the sidewalk. I think if we can work that out on paper. By the way, we have two, two of our advocates for the sidewalk here today.
He is your patient.
Yeah.
Hello.
The idea came from you and I'm so happy. I think enough people walk this length of sidewalk, right?
It's very high traffic, anyone who lives at Cambridge depends on it to get through and out of the borough, just for ease of living and other quality of life needs. So many of us just view it as a landmine field of dangers, you know, to seniors, to families with young children, to students, you know, our society's most deserving and promising people. And, you know, the slipping hazard, the risk of tripping at night, especially in severe weather, and most of all, people will just walk on the road to avoid that menace, presents an overwhelming danger to us. And the only way to clear that minefield is to build this sidewalk.
He used to be a lawyer. He went to law school. Very well said. Very good advocacy at Epi at 8:30 at night.
And I could just follow up with that, to comment, when our comprehensive plan you did back in 2019, it very clearly talks about the need for sidewalks. That was one of the big concerns of folks who were part of that whole process of coming together to the comprehensive plan. And you can see it's a priority issue number three, pedestrian and bicycle circulation. So it's something that our folks in our community want to see happen. And this little strength we're talking about here is built around it and it definitely would solve a lot of safety concerns.
Absolutely, if I may, go on, podium.
Yeah, Doug? We already just say negative.
Yep, of course. Hello, I'm Mark Goldberg. I have a fellow resident of Cambridge Hall, Ian, with me. We've found that through our time living at Cambridge Hall Apartments, that it's just an overwhelming safety risk. It's a quality of life issue, having to walk through the mud during the winter at night. It's not just a danger for students like us, but for our more elderly residents, for young children who just want to get in and out of the borough, because we all rely on that transit. To me, most of our needs every day are work, to go to school, and it's like a landmine of just hidden, you know, dangers. And often, we get frowned by reading state regulations that if the community feels there is a public safety risk by the lack of a sidewalk, we've, that the township in that area can be compelled to build one. And we view that as necessary, you know, in light of the cost being quite high for a private owner and the risk to the public well-being, that should be built.
Hello. Hi, I'm Ian Presley, also a resident at Cambridge Hall Apartments. So I think you all recognize that we would like a sidewalk to be put in place. I'm not sure if everybody's aware, but the main people who live at Cambridge are either students of the school. So that means every, well, essentially, pretty much every single day, we have to make the walk over a pass, like, across the graveyard, over this, like, strip of grass. But also, we have a lot of seniors, like, living at Cambridge. And the seniors that do live... And the seniors that do live out there, they obviously want to keep physical activities up. But there's not anywhere to really walk to, other than like across the room, and then maybe on like a little patch of grass that's in front of their space. We've had a couple of people who have said that they would like to, you know, keep, like, physical activities up, but they just don't have anywhere to walk to, because if they do want to walk anywhere, it's either going to be across the roads that are in front of the actual buildings, which is not very, it's not very safe for them either.
So nominally, we are in West Ocean Township, but we are only a ten-minute walk outside of the borough of Westchester. But in reality, it's more like we are in island separated from the surrounding area. It's just our apartment buildings, because the lack of a sidewalk in that grass field makes commuting, what is typically a very safe, quick transit, much more risky, much more cumbersome. It's a very uneven surface, in addition to being slippery. It just makes it really hard to be, live independently without a car, like many students or seniors have, and really have the same quality of living you would have living elsewhere with other means of transportation. I would say, you know, it's not just a West Ocean or Cambridge Hall issue, it's a Westchester issue. It's a county issue, really. All the businesses that we attend, all the universities we attend in town and whatnot, would all be more readily available if travel to that area was much more efficient, practical, and safe.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment on how we can see the forum against the sidewalk logic? You have your hand up.
Margie Swart. This is a tough one. I support a sidewalk being built there. But here's what's going to happen. Next meeting, Margie Swart and her neighbors are going to come, and we're in the exact same situation. Actually, more dangerous, I would argue, than their situation. They at least have a grass and a path area to walk off the road. If I want to walk into the borough, even not just the links, but across the street and into another big development off the New Street, we're walking on North New Street. There's no shoulder, like, no shoulder, no path. And we would argue this is a dangerous situation. I mean, I time my walks and my runs before school buses, before traffic. Sometimes I don't go or don't walk into the borough, because it's not safe. There's a no-crossing pedestrian sign at the bypass in North New, so we can't, we can't walk or run across the other side of the street. So, like these gentlemen, we're on an island. So I think, I think, and I'm not just pointing out my neighborhood, this is going to happen across the township. And are we just going to keep paying and paying? My one thought, as I was sitting there, and maybe a means of temporary, or what you might want to consider is a cinder, really small cinder path, and see if that will alleviate, you know, when there's inclement weather, at least it's not muddy. So there might be a cheaper solution that could be tried before we start doing sidewalks. But I agree, I mean, I'd love to have sidewalks all over the township, but it's going to create some problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Margie.
I think the most important thing we have to consider beyond safety or livability is what we're leaving behind for future generations. All of us may want to be dead or move on to other locations, but having a permanent contribution to the walkability of this place with a permanent sidewalk will really make this a more livable community in the future. And that's an investment that never really goes back. It lasts as long as there is sidewalk. And so that's why, even though we are just students, we'll be here maybe a few more years, we know there's going to be people living at Cambridge far out in the future who are still going to benefit from this sidewalk in measurable ways.
Thank you. Anyone else with a comment? Ian Tolk?
Steve Edg.
Steve, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm in favor of this. I've walked this before, they say the last one was here. I think there's a large number of residents, Western residents who live in Cambridge Hall. I'm not sure about North New Street. I mean, I traveled to get into Westchester. I got to cross some roads around these sidewalks. I think each one of these has to be taken with its own merits. And as they come up, the board can decide whether it's worth spending. But I would think this is a good perspective.
Yeah, I just want to make one of the comments. Well, I've contacted the Pennsylvania District One Fifty-Six Office, and there are great opportunities that may apply in this particular situation, which they are willing to help us to pursue. So if the board decides to go ahead with this, that certainly is an avenue that we can.
Just a quick question, is there a section that's going to have no curb? It's just going to be the sidewalk, the gray strip, and the street, and there will be no curb?
That was the information that Chris Peterson provided.
Curving's not required on?
Curving is not required.
On the edge of the West Rosedale?
Would curving be better to have?
Curving will significantly increase the cost of the project.
Can it be asphalt, like, upper at Greystone?
I mean, that's a walking path. It's also a question of accessibility. Because right now, you could probably run into an instance where you're not creating an accessible pathway, because you've got no ramps at either end of that.
Okay, fine. This is a pedestrian sidewalk. That needs to be up to the standards that it needs to be up to. It's going to serve a lot of people that walk that path every day. I absolutely think it's a hundred percent worth the investment to put in.
I'd like that.
And we have to start somewhere.
I do too. I think, you know, as I said, the board wants sidewalks, they want to start connecting the dots. I think it's a safety issue. It's well-traveled. I went to it two weeks ago, and I saw the dirt is pretty well worn. So it's obvious it's well-traveled, and I'm for it.
What's your view on all that, part of the street?
I don't know. See, it's about thirty miles.
Thirty?
Thirty-five.
Yeah, about. In that range. So then as far as next steps?
Hang on, so I've got a couple of comments myself.
That's okay. So two things have come to my mind. I think it's a good location because of the amount of traffic you have, students, and it connects to an existing, basically, it creates a whole link from the apartment complex into further extension of sidewalks. You can get into the borough, et cetera. So I think it's a good, you know, opportunity to provide sidewalks. Couple of other things that come to mind, I mean, we have, as a board, balked at spending money on infrastructure without pursuing grants. So whether it's a North Hills project that cries out for something in a stormwater thing, we said, well, we'll do it, but we're going to apply for a grant, and we're not committing to it until we know where to get the grant. But if it's a parks project, so we have existing infrastructure that we haven't just said, do it, we have rainy day fund, let's get on with it. Then we have new requests like this one, where we also have to weigh, well, is this a priority to spend the money on that we have versus preventing a sinkhole in Fresh Meadows that is going to be a two-hundred-thousand-dollar repair job if we don't get on and fix it? So you have to balance all these demands all the time. So you have, you know, it's not as slammed up, it's a good cause, and therefore we have to do it, in my mind. I do think we should pursue grants. I don't know what scale of grants that we talked about.
There's the local share program that would be eligible for something like this. The multimodal prop program, unless you can bundle it with another sort of transportation, this alone would not be eligible. You have to connect it to something else, such as if you were doing, for example, a sidewalk installation connected to a traffic signal upgrade, or if you were connecting it to, say, widening a road to install bike lanes, you have to combine, correct, I remember on President O'Brien, you have to combine like two modes of transportation in those types of applications.
That's what I understand, yes.
Okay, go back to the first opportunity. What scale of grant would it be at fifty percent, twenty-five percent, seventy-five? What kind of range of contribution could we expect if we were successful with that grant? Is that the maximum?
I'm pulling up the requirements right now. Come on, state website. All right, little share. So it says funding grants are eligible for projects for total eligible project costing twenty-five thousand or more capped at one million dollars.
And the share?
I, I don't see anything for a match requirement.
So you get a full hundred percent?
I don't see anything for a match requirement. This funding comes from the, um, the Gaming Act that legalized casinos in Pennsylvania. I don't see a match requirement here.
And that is open for applications through November, right?
Correct.
So I think we should, well, my suggestion would be to put in for a grant application for that, and then board can discuss whether we want to include a hundred thousand dollars in the budget.
We would need, um, Chris would need to get the design, because right now, all we have is a preliminary survey. You'd have to have a design in a condition that we could then submit the plan. There's a question about whether or not.
Yeah, you know, he'll get it done by then.
But this opens up an annual, looks like it opens every July.
And you have to decide to open that.
Doug?
Please consider, even though it increases the cost, just to see what the cost will be to include curb. If you put the sidewalk there and make it safer in and of itself, it'll increase foot traffic, it'll also increase risk of pedestrian safety. If you have a curb, if you have a sidewalk there and there's nothing protecting this, pedestrians, cars coming up onto there, that would be a concern for me. So I would prefer to see a, it was up to me, I would want a curb there. See what it costs, try and get the money for a curb.
You can include, you can include engineering and design inspection. You can include engineering, design, and inspection as part of your funding request. However, I think they would still probably want to see at least some kind of like preliminary layout, not just kind of like a survey plan, but maybe at least like some kind of a sketch plan to include in that.
Yeah, it's not a complicated project, I'd rather have it figured out than the size of what these grant applications would normally be.
So you think what we have from Carroll's end would not be sufficient in order to be able to pursue a grant?
It doesn't, it doesn't show a layout, it's just a survey of the existing conditions.
So we just, what we need to do is to authorize, the board to authorize Carroll to go ahead and pursue, and provide us with that, if they would?
Yes.
It doesn't have to be comprehensive, the schematic would be fine.
It wouldn't have to be much more than what they've already done, I don't think.
They have to show the ADA ramps and the, like, the sidewalk.
I still believe, this is just my position on this issue, that even if we don't get the grant, that we should allocate about a hundred thousand for the project.
I agree with you too, and I'll be willing to make that motion here. And we put in a budget for next year, a hundred thousand dollars for this project. But then we also pursue the grant as well.
Absolutely.
Any other, okay, so we need a motion now, please.
I made a motion.
And you second it, Eric. Got a motion, second, is there any board comment or public comment on the motion? So the motion is to apply for a grant, spend money with Carroll Engineering, do a sketch, apply for the grant, and budget in the capital plan for twenty-four hundred thousand dollars for a sidewalk. Mark?
Me and Ian just want to thank you guys, the board of supervisors, for being so cooperative with our community.
Okay. Doug?
And please include the price for a curb, just to see, even though it's not required.
You have to tell both sides, the street or the public?
The opposite side is in the.
Can we just figure out how much would cost to have the curb?
Absolutely.
Is part of this mission, I think, on some Charles, and also prepare the grant application?
No, I don't think.
Who's preparing the grant application? It's not Carroll. Has to be Carroll, that's what we use it for, right?
I mean, I, it's the, it's done on the single U T C D application.
You want to do it, or do you want Carroll to do it?
I've done these, I've done these before.
What I understand, the One Fifty-Six Office, what helped with this application, from what I understand?
Yeah, we can get letters of support. I've done this, I've done this application before.
So you're willing to say you'll do that?
Mm-hmm. Just be aware, there's a hundred, just so the board's aware, it's a nominal, it's a nominal fee, but there is a one-hundred-dollar filing fee with D C Day.
Okay. Any other public comments? Okay, ready to take a vote? One in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, motion passes five-zero. Thank you. Next up is Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Approval of the Board of Supervisors Meeting Minutes from September the fifth. Item one, correction, on page two. Third paragraph up from the bottom, about halfway down, it's the line that starts, Miss Nays. It should say noted that the final land development plan complies with the decision issued by the zoning hearing board.
So that was the third paragraph?
From the bottom.
Oh, okay, yep, I see it.
Any other typos or corrections? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the board meeting minutes from September the fifth. It's a second. Thank you, Tina. Is there any board or public comments on the motion? Okay, I'll take a vote. One in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes five-zero. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Approval of the bills to be paid for the General Fund, the Sewer Revenue Fund, the Waste and Recycling Fund, and the Capital Reserve Fund. Are there any board comments or questions on the bills to be paid?
Just have one question. Can you, Chris, can you, we are from seventy-nine, seven-nine six zero three, page, this is the second page of the bill. There's eleven thousand, six hundred eighty-two dollars charged for Snyder Avenue. Can you just tell us all that, what that was for, for Carroll Engineering?
Which page was that?
It's on the second page of all of those.
Prepaid fund number one.
Three hundred Snyder Avenue, construction of the C store. So that versatile bill will get paid back to that.
Gotcha, all right, so that was for that self-storage?
Yeah, so that's on the destruction, that's on the destruction.
Okay. So that is paid back by the developer?
It will be. So what happens is every month, we get the professional bills. Brian and Mark review them, and then I separate that, those out for land development projects, and Brian bills the developers directly. But we have, since we're the client, we pay the bills first, and then we get reimbursed. So you see, also, on here, you see anything that's marked like five oh four South Concrete, twenty East Washington, twelve oh five Ward, three hundred Snyder, Islamic Society, those are all active land development projects that we bill.
Any other questions from the board? Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve paying the bills for the funds as described. It's a second. Any board or public comments on the bills we've paid, Margie?
I hate to do this, but I've been doing it since nineteen, two thousand and fifteen. There's a reimbursement request, and of course, it needs to be paid for a conference in Palm Springs, California, for eighteen hundred and thirty-nine dollars. This is nothing personal to anyone here. Just been questioning these conference expenses for many years. When we look at next year's budget, can we put maybe a limit per employee or per position on some of these, what I see as kind of extravagant conferences? You know, DAM Safety Conference, you know, maybe you could just explain to me, like, how many?
like, how many dams we have in West Ocean Township, and the need for flying to California, to Palm Springs, for a dam safety conference? So. How do these conferences get approved? Are they approved in 2023 for 2024? Does, does the board know beforehand who's attending and what the topic is and what the employee expects to gain from it? Can you just talk to me about how, how these come about?
Yeah, well, at the board level, we approve a budget that includes training, development, and that means attending conferences and doing classes and certifications that are required. And then it's really managed by the township manager and the staff as to what the most important thing is for an individual employee to, you know, use that allocated money. The board does not pre-approve any of these trips.
Plus a lot of the training. A lot of the training that the police does is mandated.
Yeah, I've always said I'm not questioning any of the uniformed training and even conferences for them. So, you know, and I know a neighboring municipality, and I forget which one it is, and I think it's a great idea. I mean, ultimately, and I hate to throw it out there, I'm not one to say, and it's taxpayer money, it's our money. But, you know, what are we getting for that? So after an employee maybe takes one of these nice conferences, because I've seen them to Las Vegas and some really nice places, if they would just come back and just give a two-minute presentation. Thank you, board, or thank township manager for allowing it. Thank you, residents of the township, whatever, I went to this, this is what I learned, this is how many education credits I got, this is how I will be applying what I learned. I just think it would be a nice gesture, and I'd like for the board to consider that going forward. Thank you.
Julie, thank you, Margie. Any other public comments? Okay, we're going to take a vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye, is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes five zero. And that, I believe, is the end of the agenda, so is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you. All in favor of the chairman, say aye. Aye, thank you, the meeting is adjourned. Chris, will that?
Thank you, Chris.